Ms. Austin?
Uh oh.
Has anyone heard from Ms. Austin?
She told me she was coming on. I'm gonna text her and we'll just, we can add her if she comes in, okay? I'll text her.
Back door. Um, Mr. Houchens? Is he, he supposed to?
Yeah, he told me yesterday you'd be here.
Hi.
Hello? We were just joined by a call in. Is that your?
Hi, Ramona.
Okay.
Ramona.
Hi.
Uh, we got Kevin, Mr. Murphy?
Present.
Ms. Shelton?
Here.
Ms. Lloyd?
Present.
And then, uh, Mr. Hales is gonna join us, uh, in about ten. And Mr. Fraley?
Here, thank you Susan, and good afternoon everyone. A pleasant hello to the newest members. Wish the circumstances could be better, Dr. Lloyd, but, um, we'll wave our way, uh, tread our way through this and get better at it, I'm sure as time goes on.
Thank you, thank you.
And we'll get right into our agenda. We do have a call, so we can move into our agenda with, uh, presentation or legislative update. It sounds like Adam already. Adam, are you there?
Hello?
I, I, I am here. Um, and I regret to inform you, I don't have a full, um, explanation for you on this item. Um, you may have heard, we're a little bit busy. Um, and, uh, what I do have for you is an update on, um, the games of skill. Um, that one, um, is a little bit relevant to some of the pending items that were continued from an earlier agenda. You may have heard in the news that, um, there was a governor's proposed amendment to that. That amendment was accepted by the General Assembly during the veto session. Um, and that had some consequences to, um, some of the existing facilities. So I'll give you a brief summary of that. Um, and then there are some other things that, uh, passed this year that are going into effect and some things that aren't going into effect and, and those are up in the air as well. So, um, if you'll permit me, I'll defer that and, and we'll give you a more complete picture of the stuff that, um, looks like it's going to, into effect on July first, um, next month. For the games of skill, the, um, governor suggested, um, that, um, there be a tax imposed on existing machines and that they be allowed to remain in effect for another year. The purpose of the tax was specifically designed to fund a COVID-19 response, uh, fund. Um, the projected revenues from this particular tax, uh, look to be, um, over the course of the year looked to be, uh, I think around, um, uh, a hundred million dollars or something like that, that he wanted to fund the, um, COVID response fund with. Um, the way the amendment ended up working, um, is, may not be entirely satisfactory, um, to, um, the experience of the gray machines in Norfolk. Here's what happened. The, um, all of the machines that are in existence as of July first of this year that are located either at a truck stop, of which we have none, so just forget about that, or in an ABC licensed establishment. So that's basically a restaurant. I guess it could be, uh, a convenience store that has an off-premise license, that would also count. So if 7-Eleven had two of these and had an off-premise ABC license, they would also be covered by this rule. But the rule is that any ABC licensed establishment and any truck stop that has machines as of July first this year cannot add any more machines than they already have. So they are welcome to continue to add machines from today until July first, but on July first, the freeze goes into effect for those facilities. Gray machines in other facilities, non-ABC facilities, non-truck stops are not capped as of July first and can continue to be added to under the state rule. Um, all of the machines that are located in ABC licensed facilities or truck stops have to pay a $1,200 per month tax per machine. Twelve percent of that tax will come back to the locality. Everything is paid to the state. The tax commissioner will, um, remit, uh, twelve percent of that to the locality. You do the math, it's a hundred and forty-four dollars per month per machine at any of these ABC establishments. Again, the machines that are not at the ABC establishments are not subject to the tax. The ban that the General Assembly adopted against, originally adopted against all games of skill, uh, is now been deferred and goes into effect July first, 2021. So if they don't tamper with it again, on July first, 2021, games of skill will be prohibited in truck stops, in ABC establishments, and everywhere else. So the net effect, I think, for Norfolk is that, um, if it's in an ABC establishment, the state will have some oversight and will be doing some taxing. If it's not in an ABC establishment, the only regulations are going to be local regulations. They're unvetted by the emergency rule that's been put in place to try to fund the COVID response, uh, out of money.
But that would still expire in a year, um, July first, 2021, if nothing else is done. All of them do, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, and just to make sure I'm clear on that, Kathy, thanks for that question. So all of these machines are going July one, 2021. Is that correct?
That's the current law, yes. My guess is there will be a lobbying push for the next, um, session to maybe, um, refine that a bit, depending on how things go during the year.
So Adam, only a facility that has gaming machines and an ABC license is gonna be hit with this twelve hundred, $12,000 tax?
Correct.
Is that twelve hundred per machine?
Yes.
And, and during that time period, uh, the folks who, um, retail stores that don't have ABC, for example, uh, no pressure on them at all?
Correct.
Well, the bottom line being, 2021, they're gonna have to get rid of me.
That's the current rule, yes.
And no tax on those types of convenience stores that don't have ABC? Or, and, and ABC?
Right, no tax on any machine that's outside of an ABC establishment. So if you have a Lucky Vapes that has six of these machines or three, I don't know what they have today. They have some machines in there. Um, they don't have an ABC license, so they are, um, not paying any taxes.
But they can't add any machines in the end of my, is that true?
Um, they, uh, again, the cap on the number of machines, it also only applies to those located in ABC licensed facilities.
So that vape shop that you referenced can become a gaming store by just adding more machines?
Um, there would be no state prohibition against them adding more machines. And that's only if there is a local Norfolk rule that prevents it.
Commissioners, any other thoughts, questions on that issue?
Well, our, this is Ramona. Are we then saying that as of July first, 2021, they're gone regardless?
That's the current statute, yes, as amended, correct.
Okay. What is the purpose of allowing them to grow willy-nilly until that point?
I don't know.
Money? Taxes?
Well, yeah, yeah. I, I would have assumed right off the bat that it's raking as much as you can between this time and this time, and then it's over.
It, it, well, that may be true. It's a little bit of a, um, I, I, I think there's some market conditions that are going to be, uh, are gonna create a ceiling on that for some of these operators. They're only gonna extend themselves and sign leases for the machines they think they can get people to play. And if, if things are as uncertain as we think they are in the world of, um, restaurants, they may not be rushing to sign leases before July first, but I don't know for sure.
Well, we have to remember that the General Assembly had voted to, uh, ban the machines and get rid of them after July one of 2020. It was only the governor's amendment that kept them alive for another year anyway. So there is, I think, still, if you were an operator, some significant risk into, uh, signing a very much of a lease because, you know, depending on, again, where we are with the tax situation, a year from now, they could be gone, because they were supposed to be gone two months from now, so.
I was thinking like, oh, it did prevent, uh, uh, at least presented an opportunity to gather some sort of meaning towards that balance. Use these machines as a prop, so I, I don't know if it's all bad. It's not necessarily all good, but certainly not all bad. We can see the end of the road in this regard at least. Uh, any other comment? Uh, commissioners' question? Adam, good back to you. Further, any further comments or just later?
Um, I, I don't have anything substantive for you right now. Um, like I said, we got caught up a little bit in some of our, um, creative problem solving. I, I think, I don't know if George has on the agenda, or maybe we added to the agenda, um, kind of where we are now with, um, restaurants and some of our, um, emergency efforts. Um, but that's on the front burner right now, and I'll bring to you next month anything else from the legislative section that I think you should be aware of coming, come July one.
Thank you, Adam. Um, you know, from my perspective, commissioners, I, I, I'm not displeased with that. Uh, I, I think when we were initially arguing this point or debating, dialoguing on these gaming machines, uh, one of our major concerns, at least one of my major concerns, was these machines is getting out of control and proliferating all over the city. Um, and, and while I didn't expect, uh, for it to add, uh, another year onto this thing, at least, uh, again, we can see a light at the end of the tunnel and, uh, hopefully that will mitigate a lot of the concerns that I had. I don't know about the rest of you, but it seems to me that, uh, that's not a bad alternative for what we got here. Any comment? Thanks.
No, I, I agree with, uh, with you all about that it's not bad. I just, it's odd to me that it's extended for a year. It makes me wonder if, you know, they're simply appeasing, uh, some of the constituents who, um, wanted some kind of compromise or what. Otherwise, it's a, it's a little confusing, but it is an outcome which I also support.
Okay, we'll move on. Thanks again, Adam. Appreciate that. Um, with our next item, only agenda item two B, short-term rental discussion. Jeremy?
Hey, girl, it's Matt Hill.
Hey, for anyone.
FYI. Absolutely.
Somebody said something I didn't get out of that.
Yeah, sorry, it's Matt Hills. I was letting you know.
Yes, Matt. You even look, you even look handsome today, Matt. Look at you.
Thank you. I haven't had hair cut in two months. It's driving me crazy.
Oh, yeah, we're all fighting a little bit, so. Is Jeremy sharp with us?
Yes, I am. Good afternoon.
How you doing, Jeremy?
I'm good, how are you?
All right, bye.
So, um, we pulled this one out. This is actually in your public hearing preview, but we pulled this one out because we thought we'd spend a little extra time on it. There's been a committee, um, two council members, uh, Mr. Thomas and, um, Mrs. Doyle, as well as, uh, Mr. Murphy and Mr. Hales, um, working with, uh, Georgia, myself, and Hank, and Paula over the last couple of, uh, two, three weeks to try and figure out a direction for short-term rentals. Uh, through this phase two, our phase two approach of how you want to respond to what we've seen over the last year and a half and where we want to go from here. So, um, just to give you an overview, I've actually got some text I wanted to walk through everybody with. So my, my typical boring, uh, let's go through some texts, but, uh, give you an overview first of what we're, what we're kinda talking about. So, um, uh, the first thing we're talking about, and, and let me just, um, to, we do have a new commissioner, so let me clarify, um, we have two different types of short-term rentals. So we have vacation rental, where currently where you rent out your entire house and to someone coming to stay in it for less than thirty days. And then we have home stay, where currently you rent out a room in your house or multiple rooms in your house while you stay on site. Um, those two are treated differently in the ordinance, and, um, that is actually the, one of the, the key distinctions that we do want to talk about, um, in this, um, in this amendment, is moving that line a little bit and making it, um, a little, making, uh, home stay a little broader and defining, um, vacation rental a little narrower. And I'll talk about that in a little bit in a minute. We've also talked quite a bit about parking. Um, we do, I think we've kind of figured out that we're, we're requiring maybe a little too much parking for some of these. Uh, it's a little too inflexible what we have, so we've come up with a, a method to streamline the parking a little bit and maybe make it a little more right-sized. To try and really get at the, the ones that are really gonna be, have an impact, um, to parking and, and be a little easier on those that probably won't. Um, again, same thing, we want to focus on larger units rather than smaller units and really focus our attention on those that might have the biggest impact, so we're kind of making some cuts there. There has been some discussion about tightening things up in some more of our single-family neighborhoods, particularly in suburban areas, where we've had a lot of conversation over neighbors um, not necessarily wanting them, um, or more comments. And so, um, some, we, we're proposing, um, requiring a conditional use permit for more, um, in more cases in single-family and suburban, um, homes. And we just want to clarify the standards overall. Um, we've learned a lot over the last year and a half, some standards that we put in, some conditions that we put in on, on conditional use permits. So we wanted to go ahead and codify some of those and put them right in the ordinance. Um, and then, um, for the end of our discussion, we did have a question as to how we wanted to handle our plan development districts. That's kind of the one answer that we really didn't come to with this committee. Um, staff thinks we have a proposal that, that would work. Um, but we, it's, it's kind of open for discussion. It hasn't been a big area of, um, uh, of activity yet in short-term rentals, but it's something that is, is something of a hole in the ordinance right now. So let me see if I can share my screen. And, and I go through. All right, hopefully everybody can see that.
Yeah.
Okay, so I, um,
Jeremy, could you make that full screen view, please?
It actually, yes, I will. Thank you, Paula. There we go. So, um, I won't go too much into the detail of, of, um, what's on every page here, but I wanted to point out at the beginning here, um, in our coastal residential district, Residential Coastal in Ocean View, one of the things that we talked about, another cut that we need to make is, um, clarify a little bit between the distinction between short-term rentals and hotels. Um, we are seeing requests coming in for buildings that are larger than ten units. Um, and particularly in Ocean View, buildings that are larger than ten units wanting to operate as short-term rentals. Um, that currently is not allowed. That currently would be classified as a hotel. The problem is that hotel is not currently allowed in the Residential Coastal District. Um, at all, not even by conditional use permit. So our recommendation was to, um, allow it at least to be requested. There are some of these buildings, um, there is interest in the community from what we've heard about getting some of these buildings, um, cleaned up and improved. And this may be an avenue to do so, but our recommendation is to treat them as hotels. If you have more than ten, if you have twelve, thirteen, fourteen units in an apartment building and you're gonna make them all short-term rentals, make them, treat them like a hotel rather than individual short-term rental units. Um, and there's a distinction there with regards to, um, the way we would treat hotels, that I can think for in a moment. So that was the, that was one that we were looking at. Um, and so the distinction here that we're, that we're looking at is adding this, and if you see this red line here for hotel, um, right now it's a little vague. Traditional hotel, you think a hotel's gonna have a, a lobby, they're gonna have an on-site management. Um, right now, we technically don't require it. So we wanted to go ahead and put that in there. If we're gonna treat a apartment building that's being converted into, uh, short-term rental units with more than ten, and it's basically operating as a hotel, fine, you have to have a hotel manager. It doesn't mean you have to have a lobby. We're just saying that you have to have someone on site. Uh, if you think the, um, the short-term, of the two apartment buildings we did on Ocean View Avenue several months back, where the, the operator lived on site. Uh, it's that type of thing that we're looking to have, so that there is a responsible person on the property. We feel that if you're gonna have ten, twelve units of anything, of people coming into, to a building to stay, you should have someone that the neighbors can go to at any time and say, there's a problem, um, that the renters can go to and say, there's a problem. Uh, so that was something that we wanted to add in there. I'm not directly related to short-term rentals, but what we thought was relevant to this discussion.
Jeremy?
Yes, sir.
Uh, are you open to questions now? You want to finish your presentation?
No, please, that, absolutely.
When you say hotel, don't parking regulations automatically begin?
The parking regulations for hotels and motels are different. Uh, they're not that distinctly different from, um, short-term rentals, but they are a little bit different.
Okay, I, I was just curious about that. Um, go ahead.
In fact, when we created the, the parking initially for short-term rentals, we based it off of hotels. So they really are gonna be fairly, fairly similar. But that, actually, it's a good question. It's something we probably ought to take a, take a double-check look at to make sure that we're right on with that. That's something I think we need to keep in mind. So moving on, the, um, the next use that, that we have is the full vacation rental, short-term rental unit. Um, and so as I, as I discussed at the outset, we've, um, we've talked about moving the dividing line between home stay and vacation rental. What we have found is most of our peer communities around the state have, um, are treating them differently, have the dividing line in a different place. So most of them are allowing, say Charlottesville, Alexandria, Blacksburg, Richmond, they're allowing home stay. But their home stay allows, um, if you are the owner occupant of the unit, you can rent out your unit to someone and leave, so for a weekend and not leaving. That is, uh, so the, the distinction that most of the communities in the state that are doing this, um, is the owner occupant distinction rather than the, um, whether your home was there. Whereas we made the distinction of if you're, if they're, if your home is the owner, um, you're a home stay. If you're not, then you're a vacation rental. They're saying both cases are, are, are home stays, but if you are the owner occupant, it's a home stay. So really trying to get at the distinction between the, um, the management companies and the businesses that are, are operating multiple units, uh, and it's, uh, secondary homes, things like that, that's a vacation rental. Um, the, the owner occupant, the owners leaving for, and we had the case in Larchmont a couple months ago, the owners, um, who wanted to take off sabbaticals in the summer and rent out their unit, but that's, that was their house. That would be a home stay. So you're seeing, um, some of that in the change in definition here, where if it's their primary residence, it's a vacation, it, it is, um, not a vacation rental. It is a home stay. So you're, we're, we're seeing that carved out here. The language below that is really just, um, speaking to, um, moving around some of the, um, some of the legality language here, but I wanted to point out, um, so we're saying a conditional use permit is required if you are located in these districts here under, um, D, little I, C. Now, what we're adding here that is not currently in the ordinance is, um, historic districts. So if you recall, we had the discussion about, um, Freemason and a little bit about Ghent in the last few months. Um, so we are going ahead and putting that, um, in here, proposing that, that, um, they can currently be allowed in historic districts by conditional use permit. East Beach Harbor, um, up in Ocean View, same thing. Plan developments, um, which we can talk about, um, a little later, how we want to, um, make that cut. And the PCA, Sub-Deering Commercial Overlays, Twenty First Street, Ollie, Thirty Fifth Street, um, whatever residential there. Those are currently locations where short-term rentals are not allowed. Our proposal was to go ahead and broaden that out. Part of that was the committee, um, as I discussed, wanted to make sure that we had as much of a, of a clean across-the-board rules, not so much of a, in this location you have this rule, in this location you have that rule, which is a little bit of what we have today. It's just, it's, it's, it's hard for the public to understand, and it's hard for the staff to manage. You also see here, condition D here, um, a conditional use permit will be required if you're in a single-family zoning district in the suburban character district. Um, so anything outside the Lafayette River and east of Tywar Drive. That is a, um, new proposal based on just the, the, the feedback we've gotten from these single-family neighbors. Currently, those are, the current rules, in many cases, those would be a by right use. Um, E, same thing, um, I kind of discussed a little bit. Um, conditional use permit, if you are four or more bedrooms, just automatically, so there, so say you're in the traditional character district, you're in Colonial Place or Park Place, and you're in SFT, Single Family Traditional Zoning District. If you have less than three unit, or less than three bedrooms in your house, under this proposal, you would be able to do a short-term rental, vacation rental by rights. Um, if you have four or more bedrooms, you would need a conditional use permit. So really trying to get at the, 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 those operations that would really impact the neighborhoods rather than focusing on every single one of them, really trying to focus on the ones that would have the impact. So that is a proposal that, um, the committee put forward. Um, and then, um, in the Residential Coastal District, I believe that's, um, continuing a rule, uh, where it is today. If you have larger scale, um, apartment buildings in the coastal district, that you would be the same situation, requiring a conditional use permit. Any questions on? That was a lot of information I just gave, so I can pause here if there's any questions. Um, it's our discussion.
Can we get copies in the Dropbox of this?
Absolutely. We just finalized this kind of, we kind of finalized this this morning. We're on the fast track here, so.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
So Jeremy, just in very, very broad terms, um, in a traditional character district neighborhood, you would have to get a conditional use permit to utilize your property as a, a short-term rental?
If you, uh, no. So the, the proposal is, is if you're a traditional character district neighborhood and you're smaller than four bedrooms, you could do it by right.
Okay.
If you're larger than, if your four bedrooms are larger, that you would need that conditional use permit.
So, uh, when you consider that most standard homes in our traditional character district are three-bedroom units, all of those character districts there and all those neighborhoods are subject to having vacation rentals?
Potentially, and they would still need to meet the parking requirements and all the other performance standards, but potentially, yes.
Um, I, I'll just be frank, that, that gives me some pause. Um, uh, I, I think that puts a lot of our neighborhoods in jeopardy. Um, and of course, this was driven home with me by, uh, one of my neighbors about three weeks ago. Um, apparently there was a short-term rental like next door to her that kind of got out of hand. When you think about most of our traditional character neighborhoods, you're looking at neighborhoods, single-family detached, basically homes, some even, uh, society already challenged in many, in many instances. Um, it just seems to me that, that, that is a, a broad connection which allows for a lot of neighborhoods to be susceptible to some unruly behavior. Uh, but we can move forward. That's, that's just one, one guy's thought.
And we're happy to make modifications if that's the interest of the commission.
I, you know.
This is, this is on the key to here. I'm just kind of curious, how, how did we, uh, come about with the three-bedroom criteria versus?
So we were thinking in terms of how many, um, how many vehicles and how many, um, the impacts of it, and, and the idea being, and this is So we were thinking in terms of how many how many vehicles and how many the impacts of it and and the idea being, and this is anecdotal. But the idea being, if you're renting out a three bedroom home, typically, that's going to be one family. That's going to be one, maybe two cars. You would have mom and dad in one bedroom and kid, you know, the the two and a half kids among the other two bedrooms. If you were starting to bring in more more bedrooms, then that starts to, if you're going to rent a four, five, six bedroom house, you're going to have multiple families with multiple cars and multiple kids. And so each additional bedroom ends up becoming additional family. That was the, it's 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 an anecdotal thought, but that was kind of our thought was that the three bedroom made sense in that respect.
Yeah, and I'm I'm in agreement with Chairman Fraley. You know, I think the the majority of our traditional neighborhoods, you know, they are two and three bedroom neighborhoods. And and so it pretty much opens those, you know, somewhat already fragile neighborhoods up to be subject to individuals coming in and 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 doing more and more you you know, short term, short term use as as opposed to having families occupying these these properties. But you know, that's just, again, one man's thought. So I I would I I would caution our commission to kind of, you know, really kind of look at 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 what that would that criteria would do to to some of our neighborhoods.
You know, this pandemic has brought a a another concern. It's caused me to access the internet on short term rentals. And believe me, let me applaud our committee. I I you guys have done yeoman's work in the sense that what you're trying to do is hasn't been defined before anywhere. Everybody's kind of taking the pats out at this around the country. And adjusting as they go. It's it's kind of like trying to get a grip on a greasy baseball and throwing it, just keep slipping away. But if we do nothing, it will be totally out of our control. But I I I look at some cities around the country, Jeremy, that have very rigid guidelines. There are some cities that are just totally liberal on this thing. In Las Vegas, for example, year round rentals, I I mean, virtually every every property is 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 open for a short term rental. But we're not that type of city. There are other cities which limit short term rentals to certain times of the year. Hundred and eighty days, for example, six months. And of course, there are all those cities as well that only allow short term rentals in various districts of the city. I don't know the right answer for us. Okay. And that's why I applaud what you guys are doing. Because it's 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 pointing us to at least have an open dialogue on this thing. Trying to get something on paper that we can chew on. I, you know, the more I read about short term rentals and the more I experienced them here in our city, I'm having less and less comfort, if you will, and how these things can be used to add to our property alike citywide. Okay. And and I think we just need to be careful on that. That three bedroom rule makes sense. It makes all the sense in the world. It really does. I I just think that the ramifications of the ripple effect of it could be a little bit more than what we can get our arms around administratively going forward. But again, I I do applaud this committee. I I'm I'm glad you guys are doing that. At least you're bringing us something back that we can bite on and chew on and see if we can't come up with something that works for us, recognizing there's no right answer.
And and I'll be honest, Mr. Chairman, I don't believe we spent that much time as a committee talking about this particular piece of the of the regulation in the in the traditional care districts, so something I think we can revisit. I think I do want to pull the the commission. We've talked about the distinction, moving the distinction between vacation rental and homestay. And so thinking in terms of the traditional character districts in a three bedroom house, does it make a difference to you whether it's a owner occupant versus a rental company managing it? So it's a homestay versus a vacation rental being a buy right use. Because I hear what you're saying, and I wondered, does that give you less pause thinking in terms of it being me going for the weekend around a Notre U football game and renting out my house for that? Does that does that give you more comfort making that distinction as a buy right?
Homestay gives me a little more comfort, yes.
Likewise.
And I I think Jeremy knows that sorry, my audio is right. I don't, I think Jerry knows that we've had a fairly significant issue in my neighborhood where at the present time, it's not allowed as a homestay or as a vacation rental. And we have a five bedroom house that is neighbors are complaining about constantly and have sent stuff to the city that is being rented out for weeks at a time, major parties, all kinds of issues. And I don't, you know, again, it's not because it's in my neighborhood. I mean, I, like I said, I I've been kind of neutral on it, but I can tell you, my neighbors have been losing it about it. Because it's a, it's clearly not a homestay. The people who own the house are divorced and live in two different states from Virginia now. So and then the, you know, the supposed rental company, this guy who says he's staying there and he knows all these people. But I mean, it's been broken out windows and people screaming down the street at three AM and all kinds of stuff. So, you know, obviously, I think homestay is a easier way to go. But I understand the pressures for people wanting to rent their house, the whole house out, you know, for things like certain events and things like that. This particular house has just become a week in and week out kind of rental. So and I don't know, Jeremy, what this does to that particular situation. And and it's it's fine. I just, I think you're going to have people who will show up for the public hearing who have concerns about.
I believe that was in the historic district, so it would be, it would require the conditional use permit. So at least that, I think, and the five, larger than five bedrooms. So I think we would catch on a number of occasion, on a number of levels. But okay, well, I think we're we're hearing enough discussion on that topic that I think the committee may need to revisit that.
Let me, let me, let me speak for a moment because I was on the committee. We had all the all the discussions. There's a couple of things I'd like to point out because, you know, we 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 talked about a lot of these items. And the first one is whether you put the regulation in place or not, people are going to do this. They're doing it now. They're going to do it today. You know, so we're trying to find, or we tried to find the middle of the road ground to 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 have people register and 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 at least know what's going on around the community versus people just doing it willy nilly. And that's what's happening now. So, you know, whether we put this in place or not in place, people are going to continue to do these 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 short term rentals. So at least we're trying to put a a box around it so we can lease it and and understand what's going on a little bit better. I think that's, me, the biggest point of it is that, you know, just because we say, no, you can't have it by right, doesn't mean it's not going to happen. What this does is though, this does at least put a box around it and at least allows us to have some sort of enforcement or understand what's so I I we got to keep that in mind as we talk about it, just saying, by right, it's going to open up the door. The door is already open. We're just trying to put a box around the door so we can we can understand what's going on.
And Matt, I think you guys have done a credible job, you know, of getting some parameters laid out for us. I mean, this is what we need. Something to have a dialogue on. So in 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 no way am I complaining about the effort.
Oh, no, no, I I understand that. I just wanted to make it clear that, you know, it it seems like we're talking about just saying, okay, it's going to be allowed by right and a whole bunch is going to flood into the market. I guess I don't think that's the case. I think they're already out there. And they're going to continue to be out there. So, you know, just by passing, you know, this zoning ordinance, the first shot at it, doesn't mean that, you know, we're opening doors and thousands aren't going to come in there. I don't think that's the case. It's just putting putting the first shot of the ground rules in there to see how this works.
Hey, Matt, how how much time did the did the committee spend on on just the compliance and oversight piece? And in in the control mechanisms that, you know, obviously
It's kind of funny, and you can ask George and Kevin, who were who were in the meetings and Jeremy as well in the meetings. And I said, I thought you you were off the plan at that point in time. And I said several times, I said, I got to take up Makita's role and make sure we discuss our compliance and how we're going to lease this because that was your number one issue. And we're going to get to that. And we're establishing some civil fines. And and that that kind of stuff to 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 put some teeth into it. And sending a letter saying, they're going to take you to court. We're we're and we don't do this anywhere around the city anymore. But now we're going to send them a two hundred, I don't know what the fine schedule is. We'll talk about that, I guess. Send them a fine. And then that'll accrue interest and frankly, that could, you know, accrue month over month over month, which will have, in my opinion, have a lot more people have to pay attention to it than just getting a letter saying, if you don't cease and desist, we might take you to court. Which everyone knows that, you know, haven't done enough time to take a court.
I agree.
So there we we had, we spent a lot of time talking about that. And again, I I used your name in as put as way as I could.
I really appreciate, I really appreciate you properly using my name to represent. And and I think, you know, just to kind of echo the sentiments of of Chairman Fraley. You know, I I think this whole COVID situation kind of points out some 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 things that we we could, you know, be cautious and and, you know, to avoid. You know, right now, you know, again, quite frankly, it's it's illegal to do, you know. And so and so you know, rather than, you know, being, you know, more and more liberal with with finding a way to to do what some folks are already uncomfortable with. And and and, you know, I I think that we we really need to spend more time on how how do we enforce, you know, the laws and and rules and and compliance that we already have in place. So that as we open up the door and and, you know, allow, you know, more and more homeowners the opportunity to to use their properties in a in a way that they feel they have a right to, that that we really truly have a way to to enforce it. Because, you know, again, I I can't say enough times right now, you know, it's illegal, you know. And so if we can't afford enforce what's already, you know, a non use, then, you know, I I honestly think that there's going to be more and more people that are uncomfortable with us just, you know, expanding, you know, the 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 laws to allow for it, but but not being able to enforce anything.
I want to bring up one more point too, if you don't mind. All I thought of as you were talking, you know, in addition to it's happening today and and this is probably put a box around it. The other thing I think we were seeing that at least I was concerned about was it was almost becoming, when they were coming for the planning commission, a circumstance by circumstance, house by house decision on is, are we allowed or not allow it? Does the civic lead like it or not like it? And again, you know, part of the idea of writing this up the way this is written today is was to get rid of that, is is to say, you know, we have a blanket rule. We're going to enforce the rules as they are, you know, standing today. I think that's the other reason that it it would concern me by going back to having to come through the funding commission every single one of these. It's going to come back to, well, we like this neighbor, we don't like this neighbor, this is a good person, that's not a good person, they're taking us, you know, and it gets really subjective at that point.
That's a good point, Matt. I'd forgotten that, that distinction.
Give people the reason why we made the recommendations. We're defending them and I'm I'm all for discussions and I'm not, you know, hard headed. I just want to you guys to hear the reasoning behind the discussions we have, how we reached the decision with this recommendation.
But that's worthy, Matt. I appreciate that. Two things I'd like to throw out too to the committee, I guess. Fines, fines. You mentioned it briefly. My cursory read of the industry nationwide, cities that seem to have the most success with this place hefty fines on people. Hefty fines for violation. I just ask you guys to consider that. Secondly, registration. I think one of our biggest issues is getting those folks who are in or want to get in that business to register with us. And and I had proposed something off the wall a couple of months back. I I don't know, i- if there's some way we could forego a tax or fee for those who register, just to encourage them in their first year to just register. And maybe we'll forego a fee, and maybe we'll forego some taxes or something to entice on hands, a property owner who's wants to do this legitimately, but hasn't registered with us. You know, I think the number, the last number we heard, Jeremy, was like, we got fifty, sixty folks registered, but the five or six hundred, we know that are out there doing it.
It's in that range, yes, sir.
Yeah, how do we, how do we get those folks the incentive, the enhancement or enticement, if you will, to come register their property as a short term rental?
Jeremy, if
that right now, but
Yes, I can't, because I looked at the tax issue a bit. What you've asked just now about sort of a tax amnesty period is something we looked at at the very beginning when we were trying to put together side dish of carrots to go along with the stick as part of the two pronged approach to getting a meaningful number, a percentage of registrations for operators. And we don't really have the ability to do that. We can't without the the state specifically giving us the authority to forgive or defer taxation. We don't have inherent power to do that. It's not a part of our charter powers. However, the committee did kind of look on the flip side of that, which is to say, is there a way to tax them whether they're registered or not? In other words, take away the incentive to not be registered? And maybe that works in a odd sort of way as an incentive to register. Because you're going to get taxed anyway. And so why be taxed and run the risk of civil penalties and enforcement and all the other stuff that comes along with being legal? If you're going to get taxed anyway, you might as well fill out the online form, which is free and be registered. So we started down that road with getting Airbnb to do the collection at the point of booking. That's a voluntary collection agreement approach that is being used in Alexandria, Blacksburg, and two smaller counties like Clark County and Abington. I have spoken with representatives from the city, well, town of Blacksburg and the city of Alexandria. And they are actually quite happy with it. They do not have the ability to audit the results. Airbnb sends aggregated check in based on their own records of what was booked for how many nights at what rate in the locality for the month. And so they do not tell the locality exactly whose property generated what portion of the total remittance. But it's tens of thousands of dollars a month that Alexandria has been getting for their payments. I think they were on schedule to be a little over a half a million dollars for twenty twenty before the pandemic hit. So they're satisfied with the agreement. Of course, they wish they could do some auditing. And it's not to say they're not allowed to audit. They just can't audit Airbnb's books. If they wanted to do an audit, they'd have to approach it from the host level. They'd have to approach the property owner and try to deal with them directly to see what Airbnb has been collecting on their behalf and try to unpack it that way. So we reached out at the request of the committee. I reached out to Airbnb to inquire about the voluntary collection agreements. And they actually have it on suspension right now because of the pandemic. Their business model is severely impacted by people's unwillingness or then even inability to travel. So they have it on hold. They said they would let us take a number. So I have registered Norfolk's interest and have put on my calendar to check back with them from time to time to see if we can't get some sort of voluntary collection agreement. But that would be sort of a backhanded way of incentivizing people to be registered because you're gonna, Airbnb is going to collect the taxes anyway. And we're going to get the money anyway. That may also give us an additional pool of resources to work with to get sort of enforcement on the front end that Nikita's been talking about.
Is he, does he, does this enforcement and Earl, I I completely agree with you. And I I brought up several times, same thing. And I don't know how, people are not going to register. They're just not. There's no incentive. And and if I if I own one, if I did this, I honestly, wouldn't I, wouldn't I semi-public official, I wouldn't register either because why? There is no benefit to going to do it. That's why we talked about the, you know, getting Airbnb to collect the taxes. That way we're at least getting the taxing. But Jeremy, is there, again, I'm going to, I'm going to take Nikita's point. He's got all those awards behind him for a reason. I'm going to take his his question before I get there. If if we we put this out there, we're going to require people to register. If we do find out that people are operating and did not register, is there a fine in there for that?
And that's why I zoomed ahead to this to this piece on the the civil penalties. So believe it, Adam can correct me if I So believe and Adam can correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, we do have, right now, we do know where all the, all the operating short-term rentals are. We have been doing enforcement, but as, as was mentioned, it was, um, we, we, we send you a letter and we threaten to send you a letter again if you don't comply. Um, so this would allow us to now send you a, um, a notice that we have issued you a fine. And again, the hope that you would be able to do, um, that would maybe bring some people to the table to come register who can, or to stop operating, those who cannot do so. Um, so, um, that's what this language, I don't know if Adam, if you, um, can probably describe it better than I can.
One, one quick question, Jeremy, I think back in a few pages back, it did say, I know we're using register, but it actually requires you to get a business license, correct?
Correct.
So as long as the enforcement, I mean, you know, I appreciate Matt's point, you know, as long as the enforcement can go back to the fact that you didn't get a business license, then, I mean, that's a really big, that's a much bigger stick than we had before this committee started meeting on this, for sure, in my mind, anyway.
And we have, and, and we have the ability to review business license records and to review, um, where they're, where they're operating and we can base enforcement on that.
It's a lot more enforceable, it seems like to me, than the CUP process was that, that we were working under, you know, for the last year or so. So I, I think the committee, for me personally, the committee, Matt and Kevin and everyone else is on the right track with this. Um, because I think the enforcement thing, in my experience anyway, with my lovely neighbors, the enforcement thing is what's going to, uh, move people more than the letters or, you know, goodwill or anything else, so.
So what, what's here is the maximum penalty that's allowed for civil penalties under the Virginia code. So this is, um, the full amount that we can do. The two biggest benefits of taking this approach are, one, you can proceed with civil fines and civil penalties against somebody in court, um, merely by serving process on them through the Secretary of the Commonwealth. The state's long-arm statutes provide that if you own property i- in the Commonwealth, you are subject to civil service and process. Criminals, a little bit stricter, you have to touch the person and serve them with the warrant, um, because of, uh, due process rights and, um, fair trial rights and all of that stuff. So if the owner of the vacation rental lives in South Carolina, um, it's very hard for us to get a criminal summons in their hands, um, because we have to get help from the sheriff or somebody in South Carolina, we don't do that. Um, it's very easy to get a civil summons, uh, uh, in their mailbox. We, um, send their name and their address in South Carolina to the Secretary of the Commonwealth with a copy of the civil summons, the Secretary of the Commonwealth forwards it and then supplies an affidavit to our local court that says we have served them under Virginia's long-arm statute. So even if they don't want to come to court, we can proceed against them, we have a personal jurisdiction over them, and we can start adding these fines. We can also accumulate these fines, so we can keep adding on and adding on. Um, there are two benefits to that, one, uh, they become judgments, um, which means they collect interest. And then secondly, they attach to the property, uh, as any judgment does. So they are sitting there, the owner cannot dispose of the property, refinance the property or do anything like that without satisfying the judgment, so we collect all the money and we collect the interest. Um, if they, uh, continue to accrue, it could get to the point where we could have the property sold at a judicial sale. I mean, that's a lot of money, but the point is, um, we don't just, um, even if we succeed in getting punishment in, uh, in criminal cases, all too often, the person is given one year good behavior and told, don't do it again, and then the burden's on us to catch them again and bring it all back again. So, um, this, uh, method is really a financial penalty and really nothing more than a financial penalty, but it works particularly well against investors.
I think you answered my question, uh, Adam, I was wondering if that was the largest amount of fine that we could levy against someone, I think you answered that with your early comments. Uh, and Jeremy, you spoke about the Airbnb connection, uh, but so many of these short-term rentals are not Airbnb. And that, that too puts us in a dilemma in terms of, uh, uh, the revenue collection and have you, and what have you.
They, they do, now, most of them, Airbnb or VBR are the two big, um, are the, are the two big operators, and most of them are operating from one of those, um, and in fact, we have, um, so two things, one, our host compliance software does allow us to, to at least find them. Um, uh, they do, it's eighty-something different listing services that we can, that they review, so we can find those that aren't. Uh, so that is, at least we can track them down, doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna collect their taxes if, if, if we haven't agreed with Airbnb and we don't even with VBR. Um, that does, that does become an, an issue there as well. Um, but one of the things we did propose to add into, um, into the ordinance here is this, um, VII, um, item number seven here, is that if you're going to list a short-term rental, that it has to be made available on a national booking platform.
Okay, okay.
And then we're not gonna, so that, you know, norfocrentals.com, um, you know, that's op, that's operated by one, um, leasing company, and they find ways to use, to, um, to bury it there and make it harder for us to track them, plus what we have seen is sometimes they'll put one listing out, um, on the national registry and then they'll put a different listing out somewhere else, um, with different rules and, and, and what they actually want to do somewhere else. So, you know, you also have to be consistent across the board, um, with that to try and catch, because there are all kinds of little tricks that they can do to try and get around the, around the rules of that. So that's one of the things that we also proposed to go, and that's a standard that I think we've put into some of the, um, conditional use permits already anyway, so we wanted to go ahead and capture that.
Hey, um, I don't know if this question would be for Jeremy or for Adam, um, but I, I, I have a question in, with reference to um, just the city's obligation, um, to public safety. Um, you, do we have any obligation as a city, um, to make the consumers aware that a particular operator, um, is not in full compliance with our, our, our code and regulation?
Um, not for this kind of operation, if somebody is, just gets a business license to operate in the city of Norfolk, um, we are not warranting to the general public that they are going to conduct that business, um, safely or legally. We have the authority to prosecute them if they don't, but we are not, um, responsible or liable just by allowing them to operate or issuing them a license for them to do it the right way.
Okay, so, so if I'm a property owner, um, if I'm a property owner in a traditional, um, neighborhood and I am an absentee owner, live in another state, I've got a dilapidated property, poor condition, raccoons running in and out and the neighbor complains, then I'll probably end up with a big green orange sticker on my front door that says, do not remove, um, you, you violated some local ordinance and until you come and talk to us, this sticker stays out front. But, but if I'm, if, if I'm the owner of a, uh, 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 of a property that I've chosen to, um, to, to, uh, have some type of, whether it be vacation or home stay, um, and, and I am not in full compliance with, with the, the city, um, with reference to that property, there's, there's absolutely nothing that the city can do in order to serve notice to the public. Is that, is that what, is that correct?
Um, I, I, I don't know that there's absolutely nothing we can do. We, we can always do what, your first example, we, we have, the building code applies no matter what the use is that's going on there, so um, if it's unsafe for anybody to be in it, including the fire department, it gets a red placard. If it's just unfit for habitation, but, uh, the fire department can go in there, should it, um, should it go on fire? It gets a green placard, but those are building code rules based on public safety and nuisance, so we can always do that, um, whether it's vacant or whether it's, uh, we find out that it's unsafe, uh, it's an unsafe, um, vacation rental. Um, so that doesn't change, I guess, what you're saying is if we knew it was illegal because it's not registered, or even if it's registered, we know they're operating out of compliance, is there someplace we can, is there some way we can either affix signage or otherwise publish generally to consumers that, that's, uh, not, uh, that they're operating out of uh, outside the bounds of local ordinances? I, I, I guess we could, um, I don't think it's effective unless it's posted on the advertising platform where the bookings are being secured. So without cooperation from Expedia or Airbnb, I don't know how we would be able to warn a potential guest that up the site, the, the, the property they're thinking about staying at is not properly registered. Maybe when they, maybe when they arrived on Friday night, there'd be a sign waiting for them outside, but I don't think that's gonna prevent them from unpacking.
Right, well, yeah, I can, I can think of a few different ways, um, and I know we've had at least one case, um, you know, come before our commission where there was proper posting made that was removed, and the reason for removal was so that it would not deter guests. So, um, you know, I, I do, I do feel like some type of, of, you know, public notice that, that would be posted, um, on illegal properties could, could possibly be affected, but the overwhelming, um, you know, conversation that I'm hearing is why, why would anyone register? You know, why would anyone register? And, you know, I think something as simple as a big green or orange sticker on your front door that says what you're doing is illegal. Um, I mean, it's no, you know, and, and don't misunderstand, I'm not, you know, I'm not, um, in opposition to, to short-term rentals, you know, I think that, you know, it's a right that any property owner should have. Um, but, you know, if it's not done the right way, I think it could be a terrible thing for, for the city of Norfolk and, 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 you know, especially now, you know, now that we're kind of looking at, you know, three bedrooms or less and things of those natures. I mean, we, we really, you know, need to kind of get vigilant on, on how do we, how do we, you know, what, what do we have within our, our toolbox to enforce, um, you know, some type of compliance with the people, the six hundred some plus folks that we know are already doing it, um, before we spend too much time encouraging on, on more, more folks doing it, so. I'll get off my soapbox and, um, you know, again, if, if a, if a big green or orange sticker on the front door is, is a tool that we could use, then I, I'm not quite understanding why we wouldn't use it.
We can certainly look at that, that's a, um, that's a fruitful, uh, uh, concept to explore. It might be that, that, it might be that a guest that arrives still decides to stay because they don't have anywhere else to stay, but it might also be that their review is, um, the worst part about our homestay was we got there on Friday night and, uh, found a red sign stuck to the front door that said it was illegal, and we had no, no choice but to stay there. A few of those reviews might, uh, might show up on the platform and make an effect on future bookings.
I, I don't expect you to have to answer this, Adam, but all these vacation companies, the Airbnb is required to update, uh, their listings to reflect anything like what Nikita is talking about? I mean, if they know, uh, whether it's in local paper, broadcast, uh, through other agents, um, or somehow it comes, uh, uh, comes home to them that a property is uninhabitable, aren't they required in some way to, to let that be known to their prospective customers?
Uh, um, uh, well, if there's a placard, yeah, I, I, I think, yes, I think if you advertise your property for rent, short-term or otherwise, and it's placarded, you have a problem under the building code.
Yeah.
Um, but outside of, uh, of a property that's, um, out of compliance with the building code that's being cited by property maintenance for unsafe conditions, um, I think it's, I, I'm not aware of any, um, obligation to disclose, you know, whether it's in compliance with local zoning ordinances or not.
Jeremy, I guess we're back to you.
All right, and I'll try and, I'll, I'll try and get through this, please interrupt for more questions, but I'll try and get through this a little, um, quickly. I think we've discussed the most salient topics at this point, so, um, just on this page, just wanted to point out, adding in the two-year clock that we've been doing for all conditional use permits, um, and for anybody who registers by right, there's a two-year clock going ahead and putting that into the, into the ordinance, just so everyone's aware that when you apply for this, you're only gonna get it for two years. Six here is a, um, a new thing that we discussed, um, with the committee about notification of tenants in those, um, buildings with, with renters, um, particularly downtown, um, some of, uh, i- if you're going to operate with a unit as a, as a short-term rental, um, as a vacation rental, that you notify the tenants either as part of your conditional use permit process, either, um, notify them as the application is being made, or make it part of your standard lease, that there are units that are short-term rental in this building, and therefore you, you may know, right now, we have no notification requirements of, of tenants. Um, this is something that has been discussed, particularly downtown, um, with the impact that this could have on unknowing renters.
Jeremy? Jeremy?
Yes, Mr. Murphy.
Um, I've been given some thoughts since we last met, and because of the turnover in, uh, the rental market, doesn't it make more sense to just require the operator to include it in the lease?
So I think we've had, that's why we have an A and a B here, and so if they're, so if they're on an agenda next month to apply for one, and they haven't been able to do that yet, they could do option A, if, if it's a couple of years down the road and they know this rule exists, then they could go ahead and put it all their leases. The idea is to try and feed it in over time, and the savvy operators would go ahead and do option B eventually and get all their leases that way. That was, that was what we were trying to cover with the A and the B.
Okay, I'm not looking at it right now, which is A and which is B, but I want it to be in everybody's lease going forward.
Yes, yes, we want, we want, we want the option B, which is to put it in the lease, yes. Uh, we we, we talked about, um, seven here, which is the, um, the national listings. Um, eight here is something we've had, we put in all the conditional use permits, that you have a notice, uh, inside and outside, so that the neighbors and the renters, the, the tenants, um, have a contact person for twenty-four hour um, of the operator and this, have something for the call center, so that they know if you're a renter, you know there's a problem, you can call your landlord and, um, the city. If you're a neighbor, you have a contact for the landlord, uh, available outside of the building somewhere that you can get there. And this is, um, something that we have been putting in the conditional use permits and in a similar form, um, today. So that was the, the vacation rental, I'm not gonna touch on this, this here is just some cleanup. Um, quickly to touch on the homestay, homestay again, a little bit different. Um, what we have talked about is moving the line to, um, where you would, you would now be able to be a homestay if you are, if this is your primary residence. So if it's your primary residence and you want to leave for a week and rent it out for, to someone for a week, you'd be considered a homestay, which is a much, uh, lower bar, many more of them are, are available by right. Um, the thinking here is, one, this is, this does match most of what, um, our, um, compatriots around the state are, are doing. And two, it's the reason why, the reason for that is that the homeowner is gonna have a much higher stake in the quality of the, of, of of the rental and making sure that things are, are, are in good shape, because they have to come back and live, uh, live in that home. They don't want people destroying their house, and they don't want people, um, getting their neighbors upset, so. Um, we think that's a, a, a good move, and then maybe it'll keep some of the, um, some of the activity off of the planning commission and city council agenda that, that really probably doesn't need to be there. Um, again, we still do have some, um, conditional use permit requirements if you don't register. Um, so this room does require registration, if you don't register, you can get a conditional use permit. For some reason you don't want to register, you can come to city council. Um, if you lack the off-street parking required, um, uh, and you think you can ask for, uh, you think you can make it work anyway, you can ask for a conditional use permit. Um, and if you have six or more bedrooms in the principal structure, um, that's a different line than the three, um, there was some discussion. Um, there was some discussion, I think George had asked a question recently is whether that six is right or five. Um, I'm not sure if there's really any magic to that. It's tied to the, um, it's tied to point number five down here, which is no more than five bedrooms at any one time. So, um, again, that may be the wrong number, but I think our thinking is that this is, um, a much less impactful use because these are the under options. Um, easing up the parking burden here. Um, requirement that you would, uh, not have to provide additional parking until you get beyond your first three bedrooms. So every, by and large, every house in the city required is required to provide two off-street parking spaces. Um, some, some places are at one, some places are a little higher than that. But by and large, two off-street parking spaces is required. If you're less than three bedrooms, most likely that's gonna be enough. The idea is, is, is if you have, um, larger units with more bedrooms that you'd have to provide more parking spaces. Uh, that's a little different from where we are today. And, um, right now we're one space per bedroom, which can get really difficult in a lot of places. Again, the National Listing Service, um, point eight here. And, um, point nine, um, vacation rentals aren't allowed in, in condominiums, but homestays are. Um, and so in a condominium situation that you would have to get written permission from the condo association, um, to operate, that would be something that the city would review as part of, uh, the registration process. So the other thing, going back to vacation rental real quick, um, I didn't touch upon was, was, um, adjusting the parking requirements here as well. Again, just like I mentioned with, um, homestay, was to, to make the, the additional parking spaces come in once you get past those first three bedrooms. Um, so hopefully ease some of that burden on a lot of places where it, it really does get to require a lot of extra parking, especially when you get into the coastal character district and you're looking at 1.2 spaces per bedroom, um, initially. Now it's, you, you get freebie for the first three bedrooms. We have looked at this enforcement piece, so I will, I can go by that. Um, the one other question that we did have, um, in this, this, what you see here kind of reflects our recommendation. Um, planned development districts, which are scattered throughout the city, um, and, you know, places like Gant Square, like, um, East Beach, uh, Middletown Arch is a planned development, Broad Creek's a planned development. Currently, short-term rentals are not allowed at all in those areas. Um, I, one of the, one of the things that the committee discussed was to try to make, again, I mentioned to try and make the rules as, um, as one size fits all as possible and try and cover them as broadly as possible. Um, the suggestion was to, a suggestion was to allow it by, allow it in, um, the planned development districts, um, fairly across the board. That, we weren't sure that that was really, um, where we needed to be because there are a lot of planned development districts that would just impact a single apartment complex. Um, there are several of those and it didn't quite seem one size fits all. We have not done the outreach in these communities. Um, it, in looking, we actually don't have very many. We only have a handful, uh, I think it was about four of them in a planned development district operating now anyway illegally, but operating at all that we can find. Um, so our proposal was, and this was discussed among the committee, um, a, a little bit, was the place that we think we're gonna see the most, that we're, we're most likely to see this would be someplace like East Beach. Um, so our proposal at this point from a staff level is to say, um, allow it in East Beach under the similar rules as the, as the residential coastal district that surrounds East Beach. Um, and then not allow it in any of the other, um, planned developments at this point. Um, because we don't have a lot of them operating in those areas and we really do feel like we probably need to look at those, um, at those zoning districts, uh, more closely as they come in. So that would be our recommendation now. We are absolutely open to other discussions. Um, and I will leave it for questions at this point.
Jeremy, just by way of summary, uh, uh, not summary, uh, so much as questions. Uh, my biggest concern is that all the folks that we have out there that are doing this now that are not registered with us. Am I hearing you say that this ordinance will allow this change, this plan, this zoning ordinance will allow us to identify and notify those folks who are currently short-term rental operators that are not registered?
We actually already have them identified and we have notified many of them. We've been doing enforcement, um, fairly extensively actually on these short-term rentals. So we're actually already covered on the notification. We may have to change that. So this may, what this may do is open up some more opportunities for some to register. Um, in, in two ways. One is that traditional character district, some of those small houses. And two, it's, um, there are a lot of situations where we found, um, particularly at Ocean View, where there, where the parking changes would allow someone who, who wants to register and can't register to be able to do so because of the parking, the burden of parking.
Well, are we getting more registrations as a result of that?
That's what we're hoping is that we will get more registrations as a result of this. Uh, we do have the enforcement and we are sending out, um, we are sending out notices actively. Um, violation notices, not the fines. So I think also, once we can institute the fine system, that will also move people to register as well because, um, there's a lot of them operating that could just come in and register and be done and pay their taxes and, and be done in a, a $200 daily or weekly or whatever it is fine, you know, start to push them in the door. So that's our, that's our hope is that this does raise the, um, and, and I think it will raise the number of registrations.
Please keep us posted on that, Jeremy, uh, because the, the more we get, uh, I would have to say the more effective we are in getting that message out and getting those folks in line with us. So, I mean, I like the planned development recommendation you guys made. Um, I, I, I'm not sure, uh, just listening, uh, knowing what I know about short-term rentals, uh, particularly in some of our newer neighborhoods, the Stone Bridge Crossing, uh, Middletown Hearts and, uh, Broad Creek, get, uh, those are stellar neighborhoods. I, I don't, I don't know that allowing short-term rentals enhances the quality of life in those neighborhoods if we allow it. Um, but, but again, that's just my position on that. I want you folks to continue to, to massage this as best you can. But, uh, I, I, when I heard you say that, I got a hot degree of comfort that waved right over me. Somebody speaking? Lou?
Okay. Chair, Chairman Frilly, I, I just, you know, want to step in for a moment and just, um, kind of point out, some of those neighborhoods that you, that you, that you named, um, they, they, they actually have clouds on their titles that, that, you know, when, when those properties were developed, uh, initially acquired through NRHA and, and, and were developed, they, they don't even allow for long-term rentals, you know? So, so, you know, not only, you know, to your, to your point, not only would it, would it not make a whole lot of sense to have them short-term rentals, but as of right now, you know, or maybe I, I don't know, for the next 10, 15 years, initially I think there were 30 years. But, you know, for the next 10, 15 years, they, they shouldn't even have short-term rentals. Now, while those, while they're on the, those titles, they are currently being rented, you know? So, so again, you know, we, we've got a compliance issue that, you know, and, and I'm hearing about these fines. If, if the fines are, are, you know, are so low that I can make a profit and still pay you your fine, then there is no deterrent, you know? So, you know, I just, just thought I had to point out that, you know, yeah, yeah, not only should they not be short-term rentals, but they are currently illegally operating as long-term.
Correct. And right now, and, and like I said, right now, I think we only have about four or five of them operating in a planned development district. Um, we do know of one in, um, I think it's Pinewell by the Bay that we, um, we inadvertently issued, we shouldn't have, and we inadvertently issued them a permit. That is a deed restricted property. Um, they're good because we had given them the, the permit. Um, they're good for the two years, but then they're done. But yeah, it's just typically a 30-year deed restriction across most of NRHA's properties and, and most of those PDs are, um, in that situation. But it really hasn't, and I think two of them were in Gant Commons, uh, of all places. And one of them was in Pinewell by the Bay and I can't recall where the fourth one or fifth one were. But, um, it really has not been a big issue. Um, I'm surprised there aren't more in East Beach, especially the homestay side. But, um, I think Mr. Hales represented that the community wouldn't be opposed to, to, um, making it available as well. But this is just our recommendation. We think that that would be the, um, that would be the location that would be, um, make the most sense.
Thanks, Jeremy. Uh, I, I echo Mr. Howson's comments. I had asked, uh, uh, Adam earlier about the amount of fines, but I thought I understood Adam to say that that's the most we can apply and, and to those five instances, uh, unless we approach the legislature to get more latitude in that regard. Is that correct, Adam?
That, that's correct. I think it's $200 per violation every 10 days.
So if you rent it four times or you rent it three times in a month, that could be three violations.
Right, that would be three violations. Um, that, right, that would be the 600. Well, let's see, I think it escalates. I'm sorry, 200 for the first and then 500 after that. So you'd be looking at 1,200 if you rented it three times in the month. Um, and then the way the rule works is when you get to 5,000, you can continue, you can do the civil fines and you can do a criminal summons if you want to, or you can just keep racking up the civil fines.
So it could go pretty high if you had someone who was doing this, you know, all summer long or even throughout the year. Um, it could be something that's, it could go pretty high. One other question on the, um, enforcement, uh, you know, if you look at these, uh, uh, on the Airbnb type sites and you look at the houses, they all will say no parties, no large gatherings, that kind of stuff. And then, you know, go and they're all having, uh, many of them are having giant parties and large gatherings. Well, that enforcement, um, as far as, you know, not having a bunch of party houses just remain a Norfolk police department issue where you call if there's a, um, you know, a noise complaint or a, you know, you've got cars parked or people parking, you know, on grass and that kind of stuff. Will that just become an NPD issue? And then I guess we could pull those and see, you know, when someone's sunsetting after the two years, I guess you could look at the NPD issues to see if you could pull, okay?
Correct. And that's a conversation that we know in the planning department that we need to have a, have with the police department and with neighborhood development, who offers support zoning, to make sure that we are covering these, um, as effectively as we can because, uh, planning and neighborhood development aren't out there at three o'clock in the morning when the party's happening.
Well, and, and right now, I mean, ever since the beginning of March, if you call the non-emergency number about this stuff, they're not responding. I mean, it's, they've got too much on their plate and they, they're very forthcoming. They're not gonna respond due to concerns with COVID. So unless it's an actual violent crime, um, they're not responding. We had that issue in the neighborhood. But I mean, I understand going forward, I think they will. And I think that's something, you know, if you guys have a chat with them, but, um, you know, it's just, it's just being able to tell people who they're supposed to call. I mean, calling the homeowner at three in the morning is probably not gonna help because the party is already happening. So, okay, thanks.
Got a point. Thanks, Kathy. Uh, I'm not hearing anything from Ramona. You said what?
Oh, I'm listening quite carefully and I agree on the issue of making loans significant. And, uh, I had a question about what the, the $200 for the initial summons made, but I think that's been answered.
Right. Thank you. And Dr. Loy, uh, uh, you still with us, I hope?
Yes, yes, sir, I am. Can you hear me okay?
Here you fine, here you fine.
Okay, great. Yeah, I, I definitely get with the Dylan rule, like we can't go back. Um, we'd have to go to legislation in order to, to increase those fines and fees. And I do see how they could rack up very, very quickly. But I do appreciate the fact that Jeremy and Planning will review any cases with the police department or anything that's been, um, called in or complained before, after two, two-year renewal does come up. Um, I do have a question. Um, did the committees speak? I, I noticed, you know, there was a lot of neighborhoods and districts that got added into the, the amendments here for this. Um, were the civic leagues approached and the neighborhoods and communities approached about being added to this listing?
Unfortunately, that hasn't taken place to date. We did, um, outside of, of conversations with, um, with Gant that had been, that had been ongoing before, um, before we moved into this, they haven't been. Our plan was to get out and do some, some real community outreach and talk to the operators and talk to the neighborhoods and, and all of that. And then COVID happened. Um, it, that is a, that is a concern that I have.
Yeah, me too.
Really, I'm not really sure how I get there, um, how we get there. And with this being on, on this month's agenda, how we, how we get there. I think that's a, a topic of discussion that we have, um, very seriously.
Yeah, um, and, and just addressing, you know, Mr. Frilly's concerns, um, um, and, and another commissioner, uh, addressed, you know, the neighborhoods, certain neighborhoods, you know, that were not a part of this now would be with these changes. So that's my concern is have we approached them and, you know, gotten any feedback about it before, you know, it gets added and, you know, voted on?
Uh, Jeremy, in light of COVID, and I think Dr. Lloyd brings a very valid point. In light of COVID, uh, how, how do you anticipate, uh, getting a word out and getting that feedback from the, from the neighborhoods?
I think from a neighborhood standpoint, we could work with neighborhood development to do some outreach, just to target outreach to civic leagues. I think that would be, that would be the direction that I would go in a, in a COVID or non-COVID world. I think we would, um, we would try to reach out. I'd be hesitant even in a, um, in a non-COVID world to try and go out to every civic league to talk about. So I think I would have hosted a community meeting, um, or, or a series of community meetings. And it's possible we can still do that. Uh, I know that this is, um, council did have interest on having this, um, move more quickly. So I don't know if that's, if there's a time pressure, maybe George could speak to that. Um, I, I think my step one would be to go ahead and work with neighborhood development to get this in front of as many civic leagues as possible. Um, we'd have to, we'd have to do a, a description and, um, um, a, a real, some real outreach on that. But I think, I think it's a real, a, a real concern.
Jeremy, keep us posted on that because as Dr. Lloyd says, um, the last thing we want to hear is, uh, uh, a civic league president or active, uh, uh, someone active in the civic league coming forward and saying, you didn't talk to me.
Exactly. Yeah, when, when things start to happen, they're gonna say, we, you know, we didn't, we didn't know about this. How is this happening in our neighborhood? And we didn't even know our neighborhood was a part of this or was recently amended and added, so.
Right. Well, uh, to be sure, we get that on everything new. Okay, whether we talk to them or not, uh, uh, so I, I mean, but I, I would just want us to not be befuddled when that question arises. Uh, and then traditionally we haven't been so, uh, it's just that the COVID puts a monkey wrench into how we might do it.
Understandable, understandable.
Yeah, so, uh, Mr. Chairman, I think, um, we'll, at a staff level, um, have a conversation about this, about if there's a, um, if there's a method that we can follow, what that might mean for our timeframes? Because I don't know what, like I said, I don't know what the pressures are to get this, uh, moving more quickly. Um, and we can figure that out and bring that back to you in a couple of weeks, if not before.
Good deal. Uh, just, again, I, I appreciate the committee working on this. I, I think it's, uh, giving us something to put our teeth in. Uh, and it's good that we have this give and take dialogue. I think that's one of the benefits of having this commission. Uh, so, uh, appreciate what you guys are doing with this. We know there's no right answer out there, uh, trying to find that answer is probably where we're gonna be from now on when it comes to this short-term rentals. Uh, I can see this thing being massaged for a number of years going forward. Um, but, uh, appreciate you guys' effort. Thanks a lot to, uh, to the staff and Matt and Kevin from working on this thing. We appreciate you guys giving up the time. Yeah, all ears when you guys come back to us, uh, Jeremy. Okay, there's nothing else on that topic. We'll move ahead. I know that, uh, Susan is just chomping at the bit to get this very short.
So, um, just a reminder before we get into our agenda, um, it's a long agenda. And just as you recall, um, at, at our March meeting, we only, we only heard two of the items because they were an emergency, so those items all got continued. And then we didn't have an April agenda, so they all got, wasn't really continued. We just didn't have a meeting. So we have quite a long agenda. Um, it won't be this long in June, just to let you know.
All right. So, uh, when you say long agenda, all of those folks are still wanting to move forward at, at, as of this point?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah. All right, so I'm gonna, I don't know if y'all have your agenda. So what I'll do is I'll read the items so that, um, and Sherry will pull up the PowerPoint. Um, the first item on your continued agenda is the City Planning Commission for a text amendment, uh, to the Norfolk zoning ordinance to more clearly address parking and vehicle storage paving requirements.
So that's me again. Um, just, uh, real quick, we talked about this, uh, back at, um, I think it was in March or even February, we talked about this, um, quite a bit. We had some, um, confusion in the zoning ordinance, some, um, lack of clarity in the zoning ordinance as to Lack of clarity in the zoning ordinance as to what type of paving was required for parking areas. Uh and it was, it's kind of across uh all over the place, a little across the board, and it was, it was unclear. And there's um, there is an item later on in the agenda um where they want to do vehicle storage. And um wanted to do it on a gravel and um old foundation of a building um basis and. We felt that at a staff level of the ordinance, um we felt that staff law at the ordinance said required it to be paved and then we could, we could do so. Um the application took us to the Board of Zoning Appeals, the the BCA disagreed with staff and um. So we are at this point ready to jump in and try and clarify everything. Um the standards are confusing right now. Um our proposal would be to um. To just do do a lot of clarifications, remove the option for um gravel. Um everywhere in the city for vehicle parking. So gravel could be used for non-vehicle storage, things like that. Equipment supplies, but the idea is if it's a vehicle um parking somewhere, that it would be a pay hard paved surface. It could be um. There is a provision in there for um pervious pavers and grass pavers and things like that. That could be a a more environmentally conscious. Um situation, but the idea of moving away from that. Our biggest, our our biggest focus is um we're an urban place. We have stormwater and flooding problems. Um to be able to really control that through an engineered setup um really made sense rather than um through a gravel system. Which are very hard to engineer. Um also the idea of of oil-water separation with vehicles um. Parking, if it was being stored um and dripping oil um. The ability to do an oil-water separation system on a gravel parking lot didn't make sense, so um or is not really possible. So. Um our recommendation i- in this amendment is to do a lot of clarifications and cleanups and um. To just to define what paved means and that paved means asphalt, concrete or some sort of um brick or some sort of um pervious paper.
Okay, Jeremy, any questions, commissioners? Susan?
Okay, so the next item is uh Karina Michelle Permanent Cosmetics for a conditional use permit at seven thirty-eight West Twenty-second Street. Uh to operate a tattoo parlor. Slide. Okay, so this um site is located. Um in the Twenty-first Street pedestrian commercial overlay district. It's actually technically on Twenty-second Street. It's behind the Aldi's. Um it's a little shopping center behind the uh the Aldi's. Um again, located in the uh the uh PCO. Uh and again, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to operate a tattoo parlor. Slide.
Susan?
Slide. Sherry, you having trouble?
Oh no, I'm fine. I was going to ask a question though.
Oh, go ahead.
Did 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 we have a uh? Did we establish a a number of pawn shops for the city? Um pawn shops, tattoo parlors for the city?
No.
We did not?
No.
So that's pawn shops I'm thinking about. That's why I say pawn shops.
Yes, yes. Alright, so um.
Concerns has all always been the potential proliferation of tattoo parlors.
And we used to have a separation requirement, like a thousand-foot rule. Um we we did away with that after a couple of years. I think the fear that they were going to be. Obliding influence didn't really materialize. We just didn't see a lot of negative effect um or depressed. Uh impact on neighboring properties. And it was really only working as a barrier to entry and an unfair competitive advantage for the people who got there first. So in the interests of promoting um competition without much risk of damage to the. Um commercial corridor, we lifted that.
Thanks, Adam. Susan, has the uh neighborhood said anything? Business district said anything?
Yes, they are both supporting this and and Earl. So we still require a conditional use permit for them. And I I can't remember the last time we had them, so we don't get a whole lot of them. Okay, so and just um we've got a new commissioner, so we're going to be a little more explicit on our descriptions here of the applications. Um so in two thousand nineteen, um it the Gant Business Association said, you know what? We were kind of afraid of these tattoo parlors, um but we're not anymore. We we don't think they're the bad things we thought they were. They were not allowed in the either the Twenty-first Street or the Colly Avenue PCO. And they said, let's let's amend the PCOs and let's allow them by conditional use permit. So that was done. And now this is our first applicant in that area um to uh request a conditional use permit. She has gone to both the Gant Business Association and the um uh Gant Neighborhood League. Um what is she doing, what she is doing, and this is one of the conditions, she really does um cosmetic tattooing, um eyebrows. Um and some other things. Um so that'll be uh one of the conditions in her conditional use permit. Um one of the improvements we are requiring is that there is a dumpster there and it is not properly enclosed. So she will have to properly or her or the landlord will have to properly enclose that dumpster. And the hours of operation on this one are from seven o'clock AM until nine o'clock PM. Any questions?
Susan, when she says only cosmetic tattoos, so um. If I wanted some, you know, if I wanted a standard with traditional tattoo, she wouldn't, she doesn't do that, won't do that?
Correct, correct. And we define cosmetic tattooing, so it's it's tight.
Okay.
Yeah, and she she actually said she has no desire. She's, that's not what she does.
Okay. I'll keep her in mind the next time I need my eyebrows done, okay?
It takes a long time, bro.
I was, I was thinking, can she make it on eyebrows, you know?
I was like, go ahead, Susan. A little levity is always good. Go ahead, Susan.
So the next item is Sanctuary um for conditional use permits at twenty-three thirty Bowdens Ferry Road. Uh the first for a restaurant with extended hours of operation and B for live entertainment. And this is Hank's.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Hi.
Nice to see everyone again. Um so this proposal comes from Sanctuary. Uh you might know their restaurant from in the Neon District. They're expanding to a second location. At uh twenty-three thirty Bowdens Ferry Road. Uh it's properties located on the southeast corner of West Twenty-fifth Street and Bowdens Ferry Road in the Lambert's Point neighborhood. Uh the applicant proposes to convert a building on the site into a restaurant with live entertainment and late hours of operation. So the parcel is zoned uh conditional CC for community commercial. Uh it was conditionally rezoned in two thousand eighteen to prevent, to permit the development of an office building. Uh and a restaurant and is currently under construction. So the proposed use uh as a restaurant is consistent with Plan Norfolk. Uh with the Plan Norfolk twenty-thirty future land use plan, which designates the site as commercial. Uh as well as the Central Hampton Boulevard area plan, which calls for industrial buildings uh to be replaced with uses that provide a center of activity. And identity in the Lambert's Point neighborhood. So a new restaurant along with the development of the IP configure office building. Uh as well as the adjacent development known as the rail yard at Lambert's Point. That would bring that area a bit closer to this vision. Um so the applicant's required to get a conditional use permit um because they're proposing to operate past eleven PM. Um and then also they would like to provide live entertainment. Um so the site's also located in the Norfolk and Western Historic District, but building where the restaurant is proposed to go. Is not considered to be a contributing structure in that district. Um the applicant proposes to operate from six AM until two AM, seven days a week. Uh they are proposing to have forty-two seats indoors with twenty bar seats. And seventy-two seats outdoors with a total capacity of a hundred and fifty people. Uh for entertainment, they're just proposing a live band and the entertainment will not be permitted to be outdoors. Um so this is the site plan that was approved last year um through the major site plan review process. Um restaurants in the traditional character district require one parking space for one thousand or or one hundred and seventy-five square feet. Of enclosed assembly area. So a restaurant of this size is required to have ten parking spaces. Uh which are located directly adjacent to the building. You can see on the screen, it's in the red box there. Um the development has a total of seventy-six parking spaces, so there's plenty of overflow parking on the site. Um and that office obviously doesn't operate at the same time at the restaurant. So the development, or excuse me, um it's also located along the Elizabeth River Trail. Um so we're going to require some extra bicycle parking um to accommodate the higher than normal uh bicycle. Traffic uh in that area. So this is the floor plan. Again, there are forty-two seats, twenty bar seats and seventy-two seats outdoors. And similarly to their location in the Neon District, there's a uh focus on the outdoor seating, so. Um that is all I have for Sanctuary and I can answer any questions. Oh, excuse me, with the Lambert's Point Civic League uh on February eleventh. And then they voted unanimously to support the their proposal on March tenth.
Hank, uh where are they going to park? I I'm familiar with that building. Where's the parking going to be?
Um Sherry, can you go back to the site plan?
He's trying.
Okay, okay, I'm with you now. I see it.
Yeah, so it there there's that little, the little rectangle, it's currently a garage, so they're going to do a big re uh renovation to that building to. Bring it up to code and everything. Um but then there's those ten parking spots right out front there.
I'm with you. And uh the entertainment, just live music, I mean, more often than more than not, we see. On these applications, poetry readings and et cetera, et cetera. None of that here? Just live music only?
They just request requested a live band, so no, no open mics or poetry readings. None, none of those other uh. Uses or enter forms of entertainment would be permitted. They would have to come back for another conditional use permit if they wanted to add more entertainment.
And I think, I think Earl, they have, you know, they, as uh Hank mentioned, they they have an existing establishment in downtown. I think they kind of know what they want to do, and I think that's what they want to do.
Okay.
Okay, the next one is um Slow Dive Gallery for additional use permits at one seventeen East Princess Anne. Uh we've got a restaurant with extended hours and live entertainment. Um so this site is located on the south side of East Princess Anne. It's between Granby Street and Monticello Avenue. Uh across and you can see it on the slide across uh Monticello, you see the Cedar Grove parking lot. Um to the uh north, we've got uh dry cleaners and tires that helps you kind of put you in place. And then. Next door on the other side, there's actually a tire repair facility that's hidden quite well. Um slide? Okay, so the site is located in the G one, it's the Granby-Monticello or mixed-use district. Um and these uses are permitted uh by a conditional use permit. So what was there before was actually a a a an art gallery and they did have entertainment there as well. Um the rules have changed a bit since then. Um in our character districts, and we've got uh downtown, traditional, uh coastal and suburban. And depending on what character district you're in, there's different requirements for hours of operation. So this happens to be in a down. In the downtown character district. And in that district, if you want to uh operate beyond midnight. You need a conditional use permit. So hence the conditional use permit for the extended hours. They want to go until two. Um anywhere in the city, if you're proposing entertainment, that's also going to require a new uh conditional use permit. So that's what the second one is for. Their hours are from eight o'clock AM until two, and that's similar to what was there before. Um the occupancy, it's very, very small um space, uh limited number of restrooms, so they're. Tied at a total capacity of forty-nine. And then they are having a fuller range of uh entertainment, live bands. And again, Earl, what you're referring to. The karaoke comedian, poet, and.
Yeah, that that's a sliver of a building. That place is tiny.
Yes, it is. And then this is the floor plan. And and so in looking at the floor plan, you'll see that section kind of on the right side of your screen with the X through it. That's actually a residential unit. That's not part of it. So really only the part forward of the seating. Um that's where the restaurant will be.
Thank you, Susan. Questions, commissioners? Susan?
Okay, the next one is Grandiflora for a conditional use permit for ABC off premises.
So located in the Chelsea Business District is a small bed and breakfast known as Grandiflora, which also includes restaurants. Next slide, please. Um. Next slide, please.
She's trying, enjoy.
Yeah, wasn't sure if she heard me, sorry. So, oh, can you go back to the house slide? Anyways. So we saw a photo of the site. It's a converted residential home. There it is. It was built in the early twentieth century and as you can see, they do do a good job of upkeep. Okay, now we can go to the next slide. Uh it's zone uh CN, neighborhood commercial, but it is surrounded by light industrial zone properties. Which consists of a mix of single-family homes, commercial spaces and small warehouses. CUP was approved last year for the B and B and around the same time, they were also issued a zoning certificate for the restaurant, which allows for the sale of alcohol. For onsite consumption provided there is no entertainment and the restaurant closes by eleven PM. Uh but now the owner would like to expand his business to include the sale of beer and wine for off-premise consumption, which requires the CUP, which is why we're here. Uh he's also requesting to be able to sell beer packages less than the standard, oh, um, thank you. Less than the standard uh six-packaged minimum required by the ordinance. Uh which is allowed if he asks for and if the planning commission, or actually if the, you know, city council approves. Um and he would also like to sell beer, sorry, he'd like to sell beer in packages of four and then those crap beers that uh only come in singles. At singles. The hours of sale uh that the applicant is asking for is between five PM and eleven PM daily. And that concludes my report. If there's any questions.
Joy, that building is on the Elizabeth River Trail as well, isn't it?
It is, that is correct.
I have a quick question. Um are the owners or operators um required to live on the premises? I thought that was a state law where to operate a B and B in Virginia, they had to be on the premises.
Uh I would defer that question to Susan.
Yeah, they they have a management company that they use, um and that is allowed, I believe.
Adam, can you add any clarification?
Um I I'm not aware of a state law requirement. The bed and breakfast term as it's used here is the use as defined in Norfolk zoning ordinance. So we do have the sort of the onsite host person. Um and there are some requirements there on the ratio of, I think, bedrooms and that kind of thing. Um I I'm not aware of a state rule on that unless it has something to do with. Um a special tax or something that they owe. I I can do some uh quick digging around and. Update you if I find something.
So this would um, so this, so the property management company would be the people that would be running it?
No, so the um they the the owners of the building operate the restaurant. Um which is, which is what this is kind of uh supplemental to. Um but the bed and breakfast part, there is a, now, don't get me wrong, the owners are very involved. They don't live there, though. They do have someone that ma- helps them manage that.
I am looking at our, can I interrupt? I am looking at our 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 city ordinance and it does say for bed and breakfast. The owner of the bed and breakfast or a full-time employee shall reside on the premise.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, if I'm in, like, was reside on the reside there.
So they have a full-time employee residing on premise?
Yes.
Okay. And that is in compliance with what Joyce is reading from the ordinance?
Mm-hmm. But of course, what we're reviewing is uh the expansion of their business for off-premise consumption of alcohol.
Thank, thank you, Joy. Any questions, commissioners?
No.
I'm cool.
Okay. Uh the next one is uh City of Norfolk to vacate right-of-way of Fourth Bay Street. South of East Ocean View Avenue and North of Pretty Lake Avenue.
All right, good afternoon. This application is for the right-of-way vacation and the applicant is City of Norfolk. Department of Recreation Parks and Open Spaces. The applicant is proposing to vacate a portion of Fourth Bay Street. From East Ocean View Avenue to Pretty Lake Avenue. The right-of-way to be vacated is located within the Bay Oaks Park. Uh the request for the right-of-way vacation is made uh for the construction of new restroom facilities in the Bay Oaks Park. Uh the city owns uh uh both the side of the right-of-way to be vacated. in the Bay Oaks Park. Uh, the city owns, uh, uh, both the side of the right-of-way to be vacated and, uh, and the entire, uh, area which, uh, uh, the park is chiefly surrounded by single-family housing, and appropriate utility easement and adjustment has been made with the Dominion Power.
Thank you, Karen. For the benefit of our newest member, uh, why don't you take the liberty to explain what we mean by right-of-way vacation?
Yeah, sure. Um, so, uh, we go through this process to, uh, to vacate, a right-of-way, public right-of-way portion of the public right-of-way for any, any purpose of such as, in this case, which is for the city to construct a new facility. But we also have this process for any private or entity or any resident who would like to vacate a public right-of-way for, uh, their personal use. And we have this process where we go through and we basically collect, uh, the survey, and we do the title search, and then we send out a memo to all the utilities in the city and get their feedback on it, if they have any facilities in the right-of-way to be vacated. And, uh, and if they do have some facilities, and then we do easement and adjustment, and, uh, we make sure that, uh, their facilities will be relocated, or they have, they will be given access to their facilities if the right-of-way, uh, to be vacated has been, uh, provided or has been given to the applicant.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, thank you.
Any questions at all, commissioners? I'll say, uh, Dr. Lloyd, we get, uh, these types of requests have been coming more and more here in, in recent past. Uh, there are a lot of, um, unused streets, if you will, in our city. Uh, and we have some adventurous homeowners, another property owns, annexed those unused streets as a portion of their property, and of course, they pay the taxes on that. Uh, but this is not exactly one of those. This is, is the vacating of an area that otherwise was about the city. We're making that available now to enhance development in the Bay Oaks Park area.
So the other term you'll hear a lot is a paper street, which means it's a, it's a street that's platted. But in looking at it, you wouldn't know it's a street because there's no asphalt or paving, but it is platted as a street. So if we do want to use that for development, as Earl mentioned, we technically have to close it, so then it becomes a parcel or part of the adjacent parcels.
It'll be clearer as we go forward, I'm sure, Dr. Lloyd. Next item?
Okay, so, uh, this is Hank's, and it's Hadi McCool for a conditional use permit at sixty-five eighty-six Tidewater Drive, to operate a commercial rec center. Now, remember, we've got two of them on your agenda, these commercial rec centers that, um, we were looking at some additional parking requirements, um, and some other issues, so we continued them for, I think it was a hundred and twenty days. So these were on your done, agenda quite some time ago, and they are both back.
All right. Um, so as Susan said, this request comes from, uh, Mr. Hadi McCool at sixty-five eighty-six Tidewater Drive. The property is located in the Tidewater Shops on the southeast corner of Tidewater Drive and Regent Road. Um, Suites I and J are currently vacant, but the space, uh, was formerly occupied by a pet store. And the applicant is proposing to operate a commercial recreation center, which is an establishment where five or more gaming devices are provided for use by patrons. Um, a gaming device is a game, uh, or, uh, and it requires a fee to play. So, um, in this case, the proposed gaming devices are the Queen of Virginia Games of Skill machines, uh, which are also known as gray machines. So this was originally on the planning commission agenda in January. Um, but as Susan said, it was continued for staff to study and update parking requirements, uh, for these types of gaming machines, commercial rec centers. Um, so the property is Zoned CC for community commercial, and a CUP is required to have more than four gaming machines. So the applicant is proposing to have twenty-four, um, of these games of skill machines. They're not proposing any sale of alcohol or tobacco, uh, products, so this would just be a gray machine parlor. It's not an ABC establishment. Um, they're proposing to operate from ten AM until ten PM, seven days a week. And they'll be required to meet with the Mayor's Committee on Gaming prior to the City Council's, uh, final decision. Um, so one of the big, uh, kind of question marks around it back in January was that there's fifty parking spaces in the shopping center. Um, so we did some calculations and using the current parking standards and the zoning ordinance, um, a shopping center of this size would require a total of sixty-nine parking spaces. Um, and so when this was originally presented, the applicant was not required to provide additional parking, um, because commercial recreation centers have the same parking requirement as general retail. Um, so in the zoning ordinance, they're not required to provide any new parking in that case. But since we are proposing changes to this parking requirement for this use, um, the applicant would now have to provide one space for every two machines that they're, uh, providing, meaning an additional twelve spaces would be required, so they're rounding that, uh, out to a total of eighty-one parking spaces required on this site. So obviously, this site is very underparked. Um, staff received a letter of support from the Coronado-Inglewood Civic League on December fifth. Um, and we also sent a notice to the Green Hill Farms Civic League on January ninth, but we did not receive any, uh, correspondence back from them. So I can stand by for questions about this.
This is mad. I mean, I think, for starters, and I had a preview on this the other day, I'd like to get Adam to have the mission, give an update, because at one point they were illegal and now they're back legal again. Number one, and number two, I, I, every time this comes up, I bring up the same thing. I'd like to have a discussion before we move any of these forward on, do we want these in our city? How many do we want, how many do we want in our city? Um, you know, trying to prove these things, that they're gonna show up everywhere unless we figure out a way to put a box around them, in my opinion. So I think, I'd like to start with Adam, just to kind of bring us a date as to where we are, if these machines are legal or illegal. And then after that, maybe we could have a discussion on, do we want to have these machines, these, these facilities, and where, why, and how?
So the problem, Mr. Hales, of arriving late is to miss all the conversation.
Didn't your teacher tell you not to be late?
You're late in my meeting, you get action late. It doesn't mean you're gonna miss out anything, you usually get more work.
So, Matt, I had
They're illegal. Are we gonna, so, did you have a discussion on, are we gonna allow these things or not?
I think Adam has an answer for you, Matt.
Um, I, I gave a summary of the, um, impact and nature of the amended version, um, that's in effect for a year with the additional tax. So they got all that information. They didn't have a discussion about it, Matt. Um, my suggestion to the staff, um, was that, um, I, I, I think, I'm not, I think, not sure they're recommending approval of this. This would necessarily be a temporary use. It's scheduled to become illegal on, um, July one, twenty-twenty-one. So I'm not sure why you'd wanna grant a use permit for something that's gonna be an illegal activity in twelve months, thirteen months, whatever it is. Um, but even if you did, there would have to be a sunset put on this because of the current, uh, bill that says all of these expire in twenty-twenty-one. But they didn't have a discussion.
I got, Adam, I got a quick question, just to piggyback on Matt, um, because I, I faintly remember, you know, us having some discussion uh, on voting on, on, on these types of facilities, until we could kind of weigh in on the position of the Mayor's Committee on Gaming. Is there any more clarification exactly what the Mayor's Committee on Gaming is, what they do? And while, you know, while our decisions or, or recommendations should come before actually knowing what their position is on things like this?
Um, I, I know they were meeting monthly. I know they were looking at both the impacts of gaming from the standpoint, uh, from all aspects, just not only the standpoint of the proposed casino, which is gonna go to the citizens of Norfolk at a referendum in November, but these other types of facilities around there too. Um, uh, so they were meeting monthly. I honestly don't know if they've been having their meetings. I don't know if they've been trying to do an electronic meeting, or they've just parked their meetings in light of the inability to assemble um, in light of the current emergency. So I can circle back with, uh, our staff that works, uh, that's plugged into the gaming committee. I am not aware that they have any guidance or any preliminary findings or anything at this time. Uh, but I will ask for that and, and send it to staff to be sent out to the commissioners as to where the commis, committee stands.
Yeah, yeah, because personally, I'd be really uncomfortable with making any type of recommendation um, that, that, you know, a, a, a applicant would have to meet with the committee, that I don't even know what the committee does or who they are. I mean, I'm still kind of confused with that whole piece, the whole Mayor's Committee on Gaming.
Well, how does this supersede this, what Adam had to say about the state? Uh, it, 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 it really shouldn't be confusing at this point, but it still is. Adam, didn't what you say superseded what, uh, what the city is, uh, dealing with? I mean, it's, it's now off the table, isn't it? Because this becomes illegal at a certain date.
Um, yes, it's illegal i- in the, what, and maybe I did the math wrong. In the thirteen and a half months from now, it becomes illegal. Until it becomes illegal, it, these facilities, because they are not in a licensed ABC establishment, are only subject to whatever local regulations, local zoning rules we have in effect. So, so you can, this process is still valid for another thirteen and a half months? Whether that's a good reason to approve them or not is up to y'all.
I guess that's my question. At one point, we had talked about that, you know, if there's a, we have to have a pathway for things to be approved, at least some of them, one of them, uh, some number of them, if the state is allowing that particular business to occur in the state. So I guess my question is, can we just say, though, that we won't, I mean, I'm not advocating, I'm asking, can we say that we won't approve any of these? Um, because we know the state, as at least it stands right now, is going to make them not legal in a year? Or are we, you know, are we bound, you have to, uh, consider these, uh, without that knowledge? I guess that's my question.
You, you, you do not have to approve any just because they are not yet illegal.
Okay.
And, and I would recommend, um, a, a couple things. So, read our, you know, during this meeting, our mid-month meeting, we've always been encouraged, this isn't a public hearing, and that's why we don't give our recommendations, because then it becomes a public hearing. So what I would recommend is, uh, this one as well as the next one, read what our recommendation is. It might make you feel better.
Right. Uh, Susan, uh, just one jump. Matt, I thought, I thought you had a question that didn't, didn't get to here.
Probably a statement more than a question, which is, um, I wouldn't be surprised if, if, uh, Richmond decides next January that they still need more income and make them, you know, legal again for another year, another year, another year. So I think in any case, we've got, in my opinion, we should address what we want in the city now, um, and pretend like they're gonna be legal long-term. Again, I'm not saying I'm against them. Um, I, I might be, I might not be. I haven't heard any arguments out of the direction. I tell you what I am against is, you know, if, if we do allow them, it should be, you know, like, like, uh, pawn shops, maybe a couple in the city in slash spots. But if we, if we, you know, continue on the road to approve these things, we're just gonna, they're gonna end up in all the wrong neighborhoods um, for all the wrong reasons, you know. So, you know, I, I'm uncomfortable, and I, I'll save this comment for the public hearing in a few weeks, but I'm uncomfortable approving anything and moving anything forward until we discuss what we would like to recommend to the City Council from a zoning perspective of what these things should, where they should be, or should they be at all, how many they should be, all that. Because otherwise, we're just gonna back them up, and now we're gonna grandfather them, and I'm not sure they'll ever be illegal.
So, Mr. Hales, Mr. Hales, let me jump in here. Um, so, um, contrary to what Susan just said, um, what, what I'm gonna tell you is that past recommendation on all of these is that they are locally unwanted, locally unneeded, um, locally, um, wrong land use, um, and that every one of them should be denied. Um, we also, the thing to point out is that these that you have in front of you, they won't pay a dime of taxes to the city because they're not in either a truck stop or an ABC establishment. So, or, well, I guess the convenience store.
Yeah, yeah.
The college, but, um, the, the previous one would not. And, you know, so, you know, let's just say that the advantage to the city of having land uses that are dodgy in the first place is that if they pay taxes, um, and they can provide some financial benefit to the city, um, doesn't exist with the, the one you just discussed, um, along, on Tidewater Drive. So, you know, these are things to, to come into play. We, we are going to recommend against all of them. We just don't think that this is, um, a land use that is a positive uplifting land use in any part of our city.
I agree. I, I, why don't we just change the zoning to say we, there is not allowed to be done with? We don't get the application. Can we do that?
Exactly, exactly.
Um, Mr. Maliva, you wanna add some clarity to, uh, why we can't do what Mr. Hales is requesting?
Um, you, you, you can. Um, I think we got to this point because, um, the old rule that we had been using that came out of, uh, if Lenny was telling the truth, that came out of pool halls, that we wanted to regulate amusement, um, devices, whatever we called them at the time, um, that eventually evolved into arcades, is the only tool we had to define this particular new thing. And so it was allowed before. We've ratcheted it down to make it much, much stricter. Uh, we just haven't been, um, offering to take it off the table until now. So, um, you could keep going, and you could take it completely off the table. But the effort so far has been to, um, ratchet down on the use to the point where it's not allowed except by conditional use permit.
Right, and remember, a, as Adam was saying, you know, we, for the longest time, we weren't acknowledged, we weren't allowed to differentiate between these games of skill versus, you know, Pac-Man. So we, we, we weren't regulating it because we couldn't. We just, it was, it was, didn't, didn't matter if they were games of skill. It was still a commercial rec center. So things have changed, so maybe we need to move again to change our zoning ordinance.
Sounds rational to me. Susan, this particular application, the Tidewater Drive application, they still don't have enough parking, is that correct?
Correct.
All right.
Can we, can we add an agenda to our meeting next two weeks to initiate a tax action or tax amendment to not allow games of, uh, chance or whatever, however we're gonna define them, uh, within the city? That way we can stop seeing these applications and, and not waste, uh, everyone's time saying no a whole bunch of times.
Sounds plausible to me, Matt. Uh, George, can, can we make a, uh, an agenda item that, uh, staff explore the potential of eliminating these types of, uh, retail operations? I call them retail, uh, operations in our city?
Um, so, Mr. Chairman, there are already, I think, three, maybe four, um, similar initiations that are on the agenda. So we certainly can. What will be the challenge is to make sure that we can define this in a way that excludes these, uh, Queen of Virginia games and games like them from, uh, Chuck E. Cheese games and from Circuit Social, um, on Granby Street, which, um, is a, a successful, uh, business model. We have to figure out how to define these.
We also have to worry about whether the citizens of Norfolk wanna have a casino. Uh, we can't make gambling machines illegal. Um, if the, if everybody agrees the Pumukkies should be given a license to operate exactly these machines at Harbor Park. Um, maybe that just means we have to carve it out, but, uh, yeah, to George's point, we have to now use the new state definition, which has been suspended for a year, but we now have. We didn't have it before, uh, before, um, February. So we now have that. We'll just have to be careful with that to make sure we only catch the things that you want to catch.
Can you carve it out to say, except casinos?
Big money.
Well, that's what I would say, Kathy. There's a carve-out in order to get to some point where we are making a, a firm decision that is clear.
Right.
Because as of now, we keep revising. Because as of now, we keep revisiting this.
Yeah, I mean, if we, there's the definition of the casino, so whether they vote for one or not in November, we can always carve it out now, I would think, I mean, we know what the definition is.
And that's what zoning is very good at, we can allow it in one specific location because it's okay there and not in other locations. So it, it can be done, it will just have to, uh, as George said, we'll just have to make sure we catch the right stuff and don't, um, inadvertently scoop something up, uh, in the prohibition.
So Adam, while we're doing this, um, should we add to it, um, providing a definition for casino and, and making that a, um, illegal land use in downtown?
We should probably initiate, you should probably initiate the motion. When you do the amendment, it's probably something we should revisit, but having, being, um, ready to do it as, as circumstances change is probably appropriate.
So we'll, we'll broaden it out a little bit, Mr. Chairman, so that it includes permitting a casino, but then excluding, you know, those, those kinds of games outside of casino.
Right. Uh, that, that sounds like it's on the right track to me. I mean, we revisit zoning ordinance every month for corrections and updates. So what, what we don't get, we can always reconsider, but if we have some broad parameters in place to eliminate it, I think it feeds right into what Matt's trying to, is recommending. I mean, no sense, let's keep saying no, 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 when the ordinance could eliminate that. We can move forward, Susan?
Okay. All right, so the next one is, um, Colley Shop for a conditional use permit at forty-eight hundred Colley Avenue, and he's going into a couple of the businesses there. It is on the east side of Colley Avenue, um, and the north side of Forty-Eighth Street. Has a mix of uses surrounding it, um, it's, it's in a small shopping center, there is a restaurant and a hookah bar in that, uh, shopping center. You do have, um, single family behind it, and then you've got some more single family on the other side of the street. You have a church to the south, um, so again, a variety, but you do have, uh, commercial and institutional right around it. Slide?
Have, have we been presented this before in some other presentation? It sounds familiar in that spot.
Yeah, this was continued, um, as I mentioned from an earlier agenda, I think it was June, and we continued, not June, sorry, uh, from a hundred and twenty days ago, let's put it that way, and was continued to give you all an opportunity to look at a couple of things, one being parking. We felt that maybe the parking requirement that we had was not sufficient. And we have done, we have done that, and our, that was of Jeremy's amendment is to amend, uh, parking, or is on the agenda this month, amend parking, so we're kind of increasing the parking for this type of use. Uh, and that's what I was saying, under our new regulations, the, uh, the place on Tidewater wouldn't comply with our proposed, uh, parking requirements, and it's the same for this one here. So the applicant is currently operating a smoke shop. He's been there for about two years, he predates our requirement for a conditional use permit. So he's legally conforming, or his grandfather has a smoke shop. However, as we all know, when you come back, come back and ask for more uses, you have to have the whole site come into compliance, which means he's got to get a conditional use permit for the, the, uh, smoking or vaping products to sell of, for the commercial recreation center. And I'm not going to go into all the details, I think we've covered that pretty well. He's proposing sixteen games, um, as well as the convenience store. Um, and he is not proposing any, uh, alcohol at this location either.
And Dr. Austin, we did go by that site, uh, like Susan said, ninety days ago, uh, under twenty days ago, I guess, on one of our field steps.
Right.
So, so Susan, hypothetically, if a tenant had bought planning commissioner, wanted to stay okay to the convenience store, but not the gaming device, would you just amend it there during?
Yeah, well, and I, so I actually emailed him, and I, and I asked him, look, if you don't get your commercial rec center, are you still interested in doing the other two things? I haven't heard back from him, I'll follow up, but yes, I think that, that is something that we could do, yes.
And this is going to be inside the smoke shop, right?
Right. It's, it's just over five thousand square feet, so it's fairly big. Um, and his hours, his proposed hours are from nine to nine, uh, Sunday through Thursday, and nine to eleven Friday and Saturday. League, um, and I, I, I heard from the civic league, but I asked them if they could send me something, and then I didn't hear back from them, and then, um, you know, with this COVID, civic leagues weren't, they were struggling to get it back together and to meet. I'll follow up with them again and see if I can get something from them.
You know, uh, we talked about Chuck E. Cheese as a, uh, successful business model. Uh, is it just me, I wonder why there isn't a proposal for the kinds of games that are not, uh, really, in essence, gambling, uh, and that there's an audience for, as opposed to this, these kinds of games which are essentially gambling? Why isn't, why is it not happening? They make money on the other type where teenagers can go, people go, it's not that kind of game. Why isn't, why aren't we seeing that? Adam?
I was waiting for someone else to answer. I, I, I don't know the answer, I'm, I'm just not, I haven't looked at it, and I'm not, um, privy to that market, so.
This also. I mean, Circuit Social just opened not too long ago, and they're very successful, as, as, uh, George stated. So I mean, I think, I think we kind of are.
We've seen two applications in the last year, um, downtown and pixels, um, on Colonial. They're skewed toward the adult market, um, and I would not be surprised if there are more applications like that come before us.
Okay. Susan?
Okay, the, um, now we're finally on to the regular agenda. And we've got the, uh, so this is, so this is, we hadn't gotten to it yet, but this is the modification, um, for parking requirements for commercial rec centers, Jeremy?
Yeah, so we've talked about this, um, with the last two items, but this is just focused on the parking side of it. So, um, disregarding whether the use of, of the gray machines, et cetera, is something that we want. The, right now, those gray machines, those Queen of Virginia machines are, um, classified as, um, games or, um, I'm blanking on the term now, as games as part of a commercial recreation center. Um, and so the same commercial recreation center is the same use that would include a pool table, that would include a traditional pinball machine or arcade machine, uh, also includes these, um, Queen of Virginia machines, and also includes the other, you know, the other thing that we've seen more recently is the console game, the Xboxes that are plugged in and, and six or eight people can play them. Um, we've seen those as well in entertainment establishments, um, in recent years. So all of that reflects just a different, um, a, a, a new market and a different way of operating these commercial recreation centers, and, and the current rules don't, um, don't address them with regards to parking. Um, and I mentioned it, the, the current rules say that it, we treat it just like a retail establishment. Um, this is just the, the simple square footage, um, is your parking requirement. So one per two fifty or one per three twenty-five or whatever, and that actually matches up. I did some looking with, um, what most places around the state and probably around the country do for, um, these types of uses, um, commercial recreation centers or arcades or something like that, um, they regulate by square footage. We're starting to see with these, um, with both, with both console machines and with these, um, gambling machines, is they're small. It's a, it's a laptop or a desktop PC or, or an Xbox that's only, um, real tiny. They don't take up a lot of space, um, whereas a pitball machine or a pool table takes up a lot of space. You can pack a lot of them in. So, um, what we're proposing here is to, is to do, is to create a new definition in the ordinance called, um, gaming position. And so what that is, is every person that can stand at a machine, um, is a gaming position. So if you have a pool table, it would be defined as four, having four gaming positions. And we would, we would, if it, if it is a ping pong table, it's two, if it's any other type of machine, it's one. There's a, a few more variances to that, but, um, so if you're playing one of these, um, one of these machines, an arcade machine or, or a Queen of Virginia machine, you are, um, you are one gaming position, and then we would vary the parking requirements based on that. So you would have to have so many parking spaces per gaming position, or so many gaming positions per parking space. And that is something that we think would, even without the Queen of Virginia machine, starts to clarify and make it a little easier for us to work with and, and regulate the parking for these types of businesses.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy.
Okay, and Jeremy has the next one as well, which is the short term, kind of went over that. I don't know if Jeremy wants to say anything.
I don't think there's anything else to say on this one, I think, um, uh, we covered it, but it is on the agenda right now. We will, like I said, we'll, we'll talk about it at, at staff level to see, um, what kind of outreach we can do in the short term or whether we need to continue this.
Any afterthoughts, commissioners on the short-term, Ronald? Good, Susan?
Okay, and then the next two, Paula will cover, they're pertaining to, um, the city of Norfolk for amendments, oh, I'm sorry, not Paula, uh, Chris Whitney, sorry, um, for amendments to the future land use map and changes of zoning, uh, pertaining to Broad Creek.
Hey, guys, good afternoon, commissioners, and welcome, Dr. Lloyd, good to see you again. And this, as Susan mentioned, this is, um, uh, it's a couple of different packages here. This is, um, a collection of future land use map amendments as well as, uh, rezonings. And, uh, just to, um, before we get, I get into exactly where they are, I'll just give you a quick, a brief background of why we're doing them in the first place. So the city planning department, in partnership with some other departments in the city, has embarked on, eh, the process called, uh, the Broad Creek Refresh, or essentially an area planning, uh, process in Broad Creek. And as part of that, um, we, we've divided it into two phases, and phase one being this, uh, this is part of these, these land use applications. And, uh, then phase two would be sort of your more generalized public outreach that's, that's ongoing and, and sort of, and will culminate in the actual plan itself being adopted. Um, and it would be adopted as part of the, the comprehensive plan or the general plan. Um, and so what, what the impetus was for this planning process is, is that a lot has changed in the Broad Creek area, uh, since two thousand and four. Two thousand and four was when the last, uh, major plan was done for Broad Creek. And, and you can see on your slide here, um, some of the highlights from that plan. And so, so the plan back then covered a, um, a broader area than you saw on the previous slide with our study area. It included Chesterfield Heights on the waterfront as well as Graney Village. Uh, and this, this effort is going to be just, um, the boundaries are essentially north of Corpru Avenue or Norfolk State area and Middletown Arch. Uh, and then it's bounded by the railroad tracks, um, on the west and the north, uh, and basically where you, where you have St. Julian Avenue and South Cape Henry Avenue. And then on the east, it comes down as well, uh, the railroad tracks do. So we're, we're, we're looking at the neighborhoods that include Bruce's Park, uh, Broad Creek, and, uh, a little bit of Valentine Place, um, and, uh, and Spartan Village is in there as well. So those are some of the communities we're looking at this time. Uh, and back in two thousand and four, there was, you can see here, the, some of the highlights were to maintain historic character of the neighborhoods there, a lot of old historic houses there, um, with a lot of character. Um, and a lot of traditional, the neighborhoods there, many of them are very traditional in their layout context. So trying to, trying to keep that intact, and then just leveraging the locational, uh, benefits that it has. You know, it's close to downtown, it's close to the academic institutions like Norfolk State, uh, it's close to the waterfront, and it's just a very centralized location, good access to the interstate, uh, and now, of course, uh, access to light rail. Uh, next slide, please. This was, um, the start of, of what became the Broad Creek Renaissance, which was, uh, took place over many years, um, and really has been a huge success story in the city. Then in two thousand and thirteen, we adopted our, uh, comprehensive plan update, so it was in Plan Norfolk twenty thirty. And what this essentially did for Broad Creek was carry forward the actions that were in, in place in the two thousand and four plan. It really carried them over into this general plan for the first time. So they're now, you know, they're codified in there as specific land use actions, and this is just a page or an excerpt from that. Um, and you can see, uh, if you're familiar with Broad Creek, uh, most of these, this list here really has already been accomplished, uh, and exists on the ground today. Things like developing a new library, the Jordan Newby Library, um, the Ray Jones Croc Core Community Center. Um, there's, again, uh, revitalization of Graney Village, which is not in the study area at this time, but that is something that two thousand and four plan covered. Um, we're looking at redevelopment of a few more sites in the area, um, and of course, the elementary school, which are bowling elementary school. Next slide, please. So this, then the last, uh, the most recent planning effort that the city's did, done that had, uh, a relation to the Broad Creek neighborhood was Vision twenty-one hundred. So in two thousand and sixteen, this was adopted, and, and as all, you are, are well aware, uh, of what, what some of the goals of it were, uh, namely, helping with resiliency in, in many forms, whether it's flooding, economic, uh, you know, sea level rise, and just, um, where to, where to focus future population growth. Uh, we divided the city up into four areas, and they were different colors, but they were color-coded. Uh, one of them was purple, so purple was establishing neighborhoods in the future. Uh, so improving connections to the city's assets, uh, prioritizing infrastructure in these areas, enhancing attractiveness of the neighborhoods, uh, enhancing affordability, um, maintaining that affordability while also improving values in the area. Also, just looking at underperforming properties, commercial, multifamily, uh, what have you, to, to look at opportunities for redevelopment. So, you know, the, in, in all one of the pages from the map, uh, Broad Creek, the Broad Creek Renaissance was used as one of the images. So, so it was definitely, Broad Creek was in mind, oh, for this plan, uh, for this Vision twenty-one hundred as well. Next slide, please. So those are the, the major planning efforts that have happened since two thousand and four. Um, and again, this, just a, a great list of, of things that have happened already on the ground. One of the biggest success stories in the city, I would say, um, in terms of real, not just planning, but a real development, on-the-ground development that's happened as a result of that planning work, uh, between the city and the communities. Um, and just a, a sample here, again, the Croc Center Elementary School, uh, Library, um, look at, one of the things that's under construction now is the Broad Creek Triangle Park, so that brand-new, large, open space, which is going to be a huge, huge benefit there. Next slide, please. So the really, so, so back to the, this, this, um, the way we've done this is divided into two phases. And so the, so again, the goal of the whole effort is to, is to go back into the community and, and, and ask if, you know, are we on the right track? Is, is, is the vision, um, from twen- two thousand and four, is that still applied today? Or do we need to tweak something and, you know, change it up? Um, just, just reaching back out to the community and, and seeing, uh, seeing how we can improve it even more. So the first phase, what is, what's on the agenda for May? Again, a lot's changed in the community, and, and, and for these two sort of sets of, of applications that you see in front of you, one of them, the first one, if you remember, in two thousand and nineteen, in August, um, the commission initiated a general plan amendment to actually, um, begin looking at modifying Broad, the Broad Creek, and, and as it relates to the general plan. And then in April, last month, in April, uh, the city council initiated the rezonings, uh, that you see in front of you on, in May twenty-eighth, for these specific sites. So, so it's really to, to reflect what's actually on the ground now, um, current uses, current conditions in the neighborhood, as well as things that we, uh, that we've heard from the community and, uh, changes for the future that, that, uh, would come as a result of the rezonings. Um, and again, phase two would be a robust public process, uh, where we get ongoing input with the community. We already have a survey, um, out there for this, and, and we ask things like, what are the strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities in the Broad Creek area? Um, and so we're going to continue to use that data and, and other virtual means, um, really, for the foreseeable future. And, and as we refine, you know, the whole actions to, that you see on the agenda now, and, and just begin to refine those recommendations for a refresh plan. Uh, next slide, please. So we, um, you know, as far as the, the actual amendments, again, we, we had a community meeting on April thirtieth, um, to, to, to explain not just the whole process that I went over, but, uh, these specific applications. And the first And the first set, the future land use map amendments are, and I've got a map in the next slide that can show you, it can orient you a little bit better. But these uh three sets here, the first one is industrial and utility slash transportation. Uh to residential mix. So this is the Bruce's Park area, the city where you have the industrial properties currently zoned. Um and some sites are vacant, but but this is generally the the industrial part of the study area. With the exception of the sites all the way to the east in the study area. So this is Bruce's Park to address some of the things in the plan. Uh in our planning efforts in the past and what we've heard from the community as far as. Um the the desire to have more resident, more used in keeping with the current Bruce's Park uses, which are. Uh residential. And also recognizing that the the historic uses of the industrial, the users in the past. You know, were based off of the railroad, the location of the railroad there. Um now, it the road network isn't really conducive to large truck traffic, industrial uses of that in the same nature. Um so this is sort of a reflection of current uses, things that have changed through time. And then the second one is residential mixed to institutional. This is this is the site of the school, uh Jordan Newbury Library and the. Elementary school. It's currently, of course, institutional uses and this would just sort of. Fix essentially that um and recognize what's currently on the ground and and just making it institutional because that's what it is. And will hopefully be for a very long time. So. Uh the third one is single family traditional to open space recreation. This is the side of that Broad Creek Triangle Park that I mentioned. Um it was, uh they were divided into mostly residential lots in the past, but now that we have a. A park that's being, it's under construction, we'd like to, of course, um but change that designation as well to sort of um recognize what's there. Uh next slide, please. And this is, you'll see this map, uh this is just showing you exactly where those three uh sections are. Again, northwest, that's Bruce's Park. Uh that's where the the properties would get a residential mixed. Which would match uh the what's around it, the the land use designation of the, where you see the pink. The pink area, that has residential mix. So it sort of continued that um along the railroad tracks there in the northwest. Um then in the middle there, that's where the school and library currently is, that would go to institutional. And then at the bottom there, that triangle would get an open space preservation. Next slide, please. Um the rezonings, same exact properties, uh but we, but different, different districts, of course. So. The in the Bruce's Park area that I mentioned, there's currently a general industrial and light industrial. Uh so we would be, the change would go to multifamily neighborhood scale. Uh simply because that is what the Bruce, the rest of the Bruce's Park neighborhood is currently zoned. Uh there's a mixture of residential uses there now, single family, multifamily. Um but multifamily neighborhood scale, of course, allows both of those uses and it it matched, this would match what's there currently. So that's that's the rationale for that. Uh the next one again is is the school and library site. It's currently zoned, actually split zone industrial, light industrial. And planned development Broad Creek Renaissance. So I uh you would, I would imagine in the past, the thought was. That this site was was originally thought of as being a continuation of that of the Broad Creek Renaissance. Uh development, the mixed residential that was going on. So now that the school is there and the library is there. Um it seems prudent to make it an institutional zone to protect that and and reflect what's actually there. Same goes for this Broad Creek Triangle site. Uh it's currently zoned commercial and single family. And now that it's going into park, let's um let's protect that use as open space preservation. Um so that's that that's what this essentially would do is protect that. Next slide, please. And here's again the maps here, just with the zoning districts overlayed. So um. Bruce's Park, again, northwest, and those industrial sites. And then the middle, you can see with the aerial imagery, you can see the buildings from the school and and the library. And then just south of Triangle Park. Next slide, please. So that that's that's what um that that sums up the the applications in front of you and I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Wheatley Commissioners? Chris, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next two items are by Pathway Realty. And we've got one uh for a change of zoning and then they've got a couple of condition conditional use permits. Um so this is located on the northeast corner of Little Creek Road and Shore Drive. So it's right behind that seven eleven. That's right on the corner of Little Creek and Shore. Doesn't include the seven eleven or the other kind of commercial uses along Little Creek. It's behind that. It's um was formally developed as multifamily and the city owns almost all of it minus uh one parcel. Uh which is the one kind of on the lower left-hand corner. Um the applicant is proposing a mis- mixed-use development with multifamily ninety units and then commercial in the front. So. Right now, and I don't know how well you can see this on the map. The the, oh, that's good. The parcels are zoned um. In the front, they're zoned uh commercial and then in the back, they're zoned RC, which is residential coastal. Two of the lots, the ones on the south, you can see are split zoned. So it's one parcel and they've got two different zonings. So part of this would be a cleanup. So what the applicant is proposing is to rezone. Um all of what you see outlined in black to conditional CC. What that would allow them to do is to do the residential in the rear. The ninety units of a residential. That part of the site is also in the AE flood zone, so they will have to accommodate that in their development. And then the front portion um would be um commercial. They're showing a a potentially a drive-through. If they do do a drive-through, they would have to come back through for a conditional use permit. Um the other two things they're required to get, um because of the residential in the rear. It doesn't have the fifty percent of commercial on the floor, uh on the first floor. That does require a conditional use permit in the CC, the um community commercial district. And anywhere when you're proposing more than twenty-four dwelling units, that also requires a second uh conditional use permit. Uh slide. So this is the site plan. Again, you can see the proposed commercial uh up along the front of Shore Drive. The parcel right above that, that's Liberty Tax. They had been working on getting that parcel too. They they indicate that they are still um working on getting that. Um so if they do, they probably have to come back to you. Because I'm imagining that commercial up front would change. Uh but for right now, this is what we're doing. Uh and then you can see the apartment complex, um or I shouldn't say complex, the apartment building to the rear.
How many stories is that apartment building, Susan? Hello? Hello?
Lost Susan.
Yeah, we did.
Hey, everything disappeared on us.
Yeah, we appear to have lost Susan.
Yes.
I think she's rejoining us. Nope.
I think, I believe it was a four-story.
Four-story, okay.
I believe, I'm not a hundred percent on that, but I believe it was a four-story building.
Hey, hey, George, while we're waiting for Susan to come back on, I have a related question, but not about, or Jeremy, somebody, but not about this one, but. We just, they're just finishing up a an apartment building right there on Shore Drive about quarter mile from this.
Yes.
Maybe that across from Captain Groobies.
Yes.
Um that had a commercial component on the front of it as well. I don't like this. Much bigger. I noticed they're finishing up the apartment and there's no signs of that commercial building at all. Aren't they held to the standard? We we approved that. That 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 development with the commercial, aren't they required to put that there?
No, they have the site plan, they they have the zoning and the site plan approval for that um for that commercial, but they're not required technically to build it. As far as I know, they're, they still have plans on it. They went through site plan to get it there, but they're not. Uh we're not gonna, we don't have anything that holds it to, holds it, holds them to build it.
Can we, my fault for 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 not verifying that when we approved it. Being part of my approval was a very commercial. Dying for commercial on that area and not necessarily dying for apartments. And we take this this development here, can we say, you know, we'll approve the apartment building, but you gotta put the commercial on, you know?
So, Mr. Hales, this is a conditional use permit. Um and um a- as I've pointed out time and again. Um with the CUP, um the city owns the conditions. Um and so because the city owns the conditions, you can write that condition in and say that um something to the effect. And as we did with the turn. Um that you can't, you you can't get COs for um residential units. Until after CO for commercial is is granted. Um you can put that right in. Um you can write that in as a condition. Um and we'll see whether city council would salute it. Um I I will tell you that um. We are are hearing rumors that um the commercial. Um tenants that had been lined up for the the building at the turn have all gone away. Um given the the current pandemic. Um so, you know, we may have a, we may have to deal with some tough choices um coming soon. Um for what to do, um what to do there. But if you want to add a condition, um you know. We we're making notes of that and and we can have one written in and proposed um for um two weeks. Now, imagine the develop, imagine the developer is going to object strenuously.
Well, it it is revealing what Matt just brought to light. Uh I think in most instances in the past, we got what we said we were going to get. Uh and I'm I'm familiar with the bill that Matt's talking about. I do remember there was commercial portion and a uh commercial uh portion of that project. I kind of like the concept generally. I mean, if we're gonna prove something. Uh let's hold somebody to to giving us what what we've given them the approval to do. Um um uh but again, that's probably something that we need to do at uh at the public hearing, I suspect, correct, George? And uh we can uh and we can, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so Mr. Farley, I mean, that's, we use the the um this meeting and we use the the field trip, uh which. Fortunately, we're we're unable to to um to go on these days, but you know, we use that as these times as opportunities. Um to gain an understanding from y'all as to what you would like to see in the um. Recommendation, what you'd like to see in a in a draft ordinance um or a set of conditions. Um so I, you know, I'm hearing you and Mr. Hales. Um I'm not hearing objection from the other members of the commission, so. Um if if that's the kind of condition you'd like to see, we'll we'll have it in and we will propose it.
What's the square footage on the commercial, do you know, George?
I don't. I mean, I think it's, you know, set up as a, you know, a a pickboy-ish.
Yeah.
And it's a, you know, it's a it's a drive-through chicken restaurant or drive-through somebody's restaurant of some sort. So not a whole lot of square footage.
I agree with Matt and Earl. I mean, just from a development standpoint, that commercial is gonna pay a lot more to the city and taxes and everything else. So I think that we do need to, just as a general rule, require if we think we're getting commercial, that's a reason to. Do these projects, we should get the commercial because that's what's paying the bills. So.
Yeah, I I agree. I agree.
I'll take I'll take it one step further. I, you know, I know Ocean View, I know these folks over there. You know, we're all dying for commercial over there and and they're selling these projects, these apartments with the commercial attached to them. And people are not excited about the apartments more so than excited about the commercial. Um and I'm one of them. I I'm just, you know, Virginia Beach is putting apartments everywhere, you know, and Ocean View, I could. I don't know what we have.
But, Mr. Hales, while we're.
Apartments going, units going in right now all over Ocean View, you know, it's it's gonna turn into an ugly scene if we don't keep it under control.
Yeah, so, Mr. Hales, let me, I mean, I I again, this is, we're killing a little time for for Susan's computer to finish rebooting and for her to get back on. But um. The um this is essentially across the street from the um East Beach Shopping Center. And um plans that we're seeing, um and Jeremy can talk about it at, you know, in greater detail. But plans we're seeing is um to go in to that shopping center and actually uh remove. A fair amount of the commercial space and replace it with um multifamily residential. Uh you know, we are, I mean, look, I I mean, I, there's no other way to say this. We are in the middle of a of a retail apocalypse. Um or maybe a more, a a less pejorative term would be to say, we are in the middle of a major, major realignment. And um how retailing is done um in in this um in this country. Um and so um I I think for us to have this expectation that we're gonna have a commercial component. As part of everything going forward, um we've got to think a little bit. We got, we're gonna have to think a little harder and a little smarter about what that commercial component needs to look like. Probably won't be the standard retail that we're used to. It's gonna be restaurants, it's gonna be services, it's gonna be those sorts of things that you can't get through Amazon.
And I'm not, and I'm not advocating this to be commercial. What I'm saying is that I'm not a big fan of apartments. Me personally, and and more and more and more apartments. And in in if if you're asking me, just me personally, to approve apartment, then I'd like to get some benefit out of that. It would be some commercial space over there, whether it be a restaurant or retail, whatever it may be, a gym. If if we're not willing to do that, then let's look at single-family homes.
Mr. Mr. Hales, I I, you know, that it would be the sense of the commission. I I do point out. Is this is land that's being acquired from the city. And there's a contract that city council has has approved um that is for these uses. So um. You know, I I just, I point that out just to give you a point of information.
I understand. You mean, why you're giving it to me? I'm well aware. I will call, I will call the um the uh. The appropriate person and discuss this with the appropriate person this week, just to say, here are my concerns and. Make sure we're aware of it. I understand that news is important right now.
Well, this project aside, though, George, I do think it's important that we continue to have on the development departments and others' minds that. Creating um commercial uses on ground floors or at entryways to apartments and things like that. Um you know, aside from Matt's issue, just apartments in general. It is really important to maintain, and I know you know this, George, can you preach it, but to, you know, maintain that vibrancy. So. Hopefully, um we can campaign to get some of that commercial with our residential. And I'm not talking about, you know, giant department stores. I'm just talking about, like you said, restaurants or something that increases that vibrancy.
Yeah, I mean, I will tell you that neither the planning department nor the development department were excited about. You know, this particular project um at this particular time.
Yeah, I can imagine.
We we both um strongly encouraged um continuing to hold the property to see if it could be. Assembled as part of a greater whole and create um something more transformative. But um. That was not the the choice that the city council made and so.
I understand.
We lost and we we now, you know, we now move on smartly.
Doctor Hoffman, you had something you were trying to ask?
Well, I think on the issue of single family versus apartments going forward, uh. Doesn't uh, don't the studies really point to the need for more apartments to be available? Uh for the for how the economy is developing, how uh uh the average, what the average family is going to need. And what they can afford. Uh and that it can, uh and I'm sorry to hear that this can't be part of a larger package. Create the kind of of vibrancy uh that are parts of cities, that are what cities are all about. So. Well, that's my point.
I mean, I mean, Roman, I agree with a hundred and ten percent. You know, and and we keep getting sold, this is Ocean View now, talking my particular neck of the woods, which a lot of people doesn't believe it actually is part of Norfolk, but it is. But we keep getting told we need more residents in there. Half of your retail circle. Is in water, so you need more residents. And we, and and the community keeps saying, yes, go and put the apartments in because we want the commercial, we want this. And we're getting, right now, we're getting bait and switch. We're getting the apartments, but not the commercial. You know, and and again, my opinion, I know I'm an elected official or or the alter decision maker. But in my opinion, is enough with the apartments. If we're not gonna get the commercial, then enough with the apartments, go to single fam- family homes and housing. Because this is not downtown. This is not, you know, where we have, we want abundance of of units out there. To have people out there.
Yeah, although I think, Mr. Hales, it's fair to say that um single family uh up against a a mobile home park. Yeah, though I think, Mr. Hales, it's fair to say that single family up against a a mobile home park exactly probably highest and highest values and things like that. So, I mean, yeah. We would have, we would have preferred to have tried to assemble the the mobile home park into a a larger parcel, but that's, you know, that that was neither here nor there.
From the property that you up, so the mobile home park will be unaffordable and be later on.
The choice, you know, the choices you have, I mean, and we will, we've heard you, we'll add a condition. The choices you all have is to accept the condition and and be comfortable that that you're getting, you know, that that a a part of a loaf is better than no loaf at all, or to to recommend against it. Given, given that city council's already approved the sale, I'm not sure that recommending against it is something that that would be sustained at council, but you know, it it would be, it is, it is y'all's choice to make.
I will, and I I will call Councilman Smee going, let him know what I'm doing.
All right. Let's move on to the next one, please.
Right, exactly. Who's gonna cover? I think we don't have any Susan. She hadn't gotten back with us.
So advance the slide, please.
So the next one is a conditional use permit for Fort Tarloft. That's, that's me. The applicant, Mr. Glenn, owns the building known as Fort Tarloft, which is located at the three-way juncture at 11th Street, Monticello Avenue in Fort Arling. He would like to be able to market his apartments as vacation rental. Built in 1916 as an automobile showroom, Fort Tarloft is a contributing structure of the Norfolk Auto Row Historic District in which is a state and national district, but not a local district. Some years back, it was renovated and is now a mixed-use building with 3,000 square feet of commercial space on the ground floor and 13 one-bedroom apartments on the second floor. Apartments with 10 or less units don't need a conditional use permit. But as I already mentioned, that he he oversteps that threshold, so he needs a conditional use permit. At this time, Mr. Glenn is requesting a conditional use permit for just two of the building's units. So if approved, the total number of overnight guests will be limited to just four, two to each bedroom. And of course, as already mentioned earlier, short-term rentals, or also known as vacation rentals, do have a two-year expiration date. Next slide, please. As you'll be able to see in the next slide, the subject property is Zone G1, Gramby, Monticello Corridor, mixed use. Surrounding the property is a mix of office and commercial. And across Monticello City, sorry, across Monticello, Monticello is the city-owned parking lot. So I know one of the big questions is, especially for short-term rentals, is does the neighborhood support their application? In this particular case, we we don't know yet. They do have, they have been scheduled a meeting with the Downtown Civic League on May 18th. So we will update the the staff report as soon as we find out what what the Downtown Civic League's response to to their application. I'm sorry?
I I take it that he hadn't had too much success in renting these units?
Um, I, he hadn't had a chance to meet with them, with the Downtown Civic League yet.
Yeah, well, I mean, he wants to try the short-term rentals because he can't rent the units.
Oh, yes. Yes, he he he's mentioned to me, he he makes more money with them as short-term rentals. Yes.
If I may, it's often not that they can't rent them as apartments, but they make more money as short-term rentals. And I don't know if that's the case in this situation or not. And more importantly than the civic league, Wayne, and have the current residents been notified, or is there a condition in the application? Or or the conditional use permit that requires him to notify the current residents and future residents?
Well, I will say that as a condition of approval, we did include the new terms that Jeremy has proposed in that the other leases will have to be notified either in a lease or in a posted, I think it was. Did that answer your question? You mean in more immediate terms, like a letter sent to them?
I'm curious if the people who are under existing leases know that they potentially will be living in a building for short-term rentals.
I can, I can check to see who was sent letters in in our mailing list. I I don't have that answer at this point. I know we sent property owners within, I think it's 300 feet. But that would be a good
That's the problem.
Good question.
Yeah.
So.
Not last Michael myself, but he needs to get prepared before the public hearing.
Yeah, and I can, I can ask. Um, so.
George, hold on a minute. So, Mr. Murphy, just theoretically speaking, and Adam, tell me if we can do this or not. Would a condition in here stipulating that no short-term rental of any unit could occur prior to all of the tenants, all of the leases of current tenants being amended to include short-term rental permission? So that if they, I mean, the idea is, is, you know, I I hesitate to say a renter has more sway than the owner of the building in some ways. But if we're concerned about the renters, would putting a condition in and saying he can't actually use the units for short-term rentals until all of the current leases have been notified and or their their leases adjusted to include the possibility of, would that cure your concern, even if they haven't been notified?
Um, they, they, it would be ideal if they could be notified before the public hearing. Because if I've just signed a 12-month lease to stay there and the applicant is only required to notify me after he has permission to do the short-term rental, then I'm kind of in a bind. I've got to spend the next 11 months potentially in a building that allows short-term rentals, which I wouldn't have chosen to rent in if I had known that that was going on. So the sooner the notification can occur, the better, in my, in my opinion. And I apologize for being especially passionate about this, but over the past several years in downtown, I haven't heard a single complaint about short-term rental bad behavior or parking. The only complaints I hear is from tenants who live in buildings that allow short-term rentals. And it was done without them being made aware before they signed the lease.
Yeah, I think, I I think prudence goes a long way, and I think Kevin's got a point here. We need to let those folks know as soon as we know this is coming. I mean, that should be a part of his conditions that all the folks are notified. I think that's only fair.
Well, I I think this is only, I think the notice is only useful before the public hearing occurs. To say after it's approved or as a condition, you have to let the people know or amend their leases. I I don't know what that accomplishes, telling a person to sign this new lease or else the leases, or else you're out on the street. I I mean, that's puts them in a no-win situation to either have to move out or consent to the short-term rentals. And I don't know why we would force that sort of game of chicken to occur. If the pur, if the purpose for wanting the residents to weigh in on the question of whether this could happen in a compatible way with the people who already live there is to hear from them about what their concerns are about the nature of the building or the access or the noise issues, then conditions can be imposed to try to ameliorate those. Maybe the only unit that can be used is the one that's all the way at the end of the hall. Maybe there's some other provisions in there that will address whatever it is the one or two current tenants are concerned about, and and that's what the conditions are designed to do, to ameliorate the likelihood that there are negative impacts on surrounding people, businesses, owners. So I think it's only helpful if you can let these people know this is coming before you get to the public hearing because that's the only way you can hope to address whatever it is that they are worried about.
Well, I will concur with that. And the important thing is is make sure the applicant knows and gets it done as a condition of moving forward with this application.
So I'm just, I'm sorry.
How many units are in here? If we didn't make it a requirement of the applications on the docket, it might, for this one, we might just have to mail the letter. I'm just, I'm just throwing that out as an idea or dropping it in the mailboxes.
There's 13 units. I'm more than happy to, if Sherry can send me a copy of the letter that she sent to the nearby residents, I'm more than happy to stop by tomorrow and drop it in their, their little little inboxes or their mailboxes. I'm looking at our mail mailing list. Their their addresses are not.
They don't, they're not owners, right?
I I think we should pursue that.
I I agree, actually. I think that's a very valid point, and I'm glad it was brought up. Okay, well, I'll continue if there aren't any other questions at this point.
Make that a condition, we'll move forward.
I'm sorry?
We'll get those notifications out and make that a condition in the application, and we can just move forward.
I I don't understand. I I will, we'll make, I'll, I'll provide letters as soon as I can. But a condition of, are you referring to like a condition of approval in the staff report?
Yeah, I'm I'm referring to that.
I think the condition's already been written into the draft conditions.
Right.
And he has to continue to keep it in people's leases and things like that.
Exactly.
That is, that that is something, yes, we we do have that in the in the draft report, correct?
Right. Next item.
Actually, I I hadn't finished with the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Joy.
Maybe you don't care about the rest of it.
We care about it all officially.
I I was just gonna talk about parking. There's, I'll just wrap it up real quick, saying that there's less parking requirement than what is currently needed. And all their parking is actually on the first floor inside the building. Kind of cool. Landscaping, there really isn't much opportunity for landscaping because, like most older buildings, the the building goes right up to the property line. However, I will say that I've been talking to Mr. Glenn. And if you see with the other photo there, there's this unfinished surface above the door there. He's agreed to have that as if, as, he's agreed to have that fixed if this is approved. And that concludes my report.
Oh, here, okay. Thank you, Joy. Anybody there for the next item?
Can y'all hear me?
Yeah, you fine.
I apologize. All right, so this item, Poppy Angel. So three hours ago, I think Jeremy was talking to you about amendments to our parking regulations as far as paving. The application that brought it up is not a paved site. What the applicant is proposing to do, and this is at 5570 Rabie Road. It's on Rabie Road, and it's kind of between Virginia Beach Boulevard, North Military Highway, right in the middle, Rabie and Sabre. It's a, an industrial area, and the applicant is proposing to do an automobile storage lot. So again, I mentioned it was industrial. And an automobile storage lot does require a conditional use permit in this district. So when we had originally met with the applicant, we had told her that she would be required to pay the lot. She felt that, even though it's very clear when you look at the performance standards for automobile-related uses, it says it has to be a paved lot. She, again, she went to the BZA, she prevailed. We have been very clear with her from the get-go that even if she prevails at the Board of Zoning Appeals, through the conditional use permit, we would require that the lot be paved, and it would be required to go through site plan. Slide, Sherry. So this is the site now. This is not a current survey. There are no structures on the site right now. This is what she is proposing for landscaping. Slide. There we go. So I went out to the site yesterday. So you can see they tell us there are patches of gravel or or pavement. I don't see any, or concrete. To me, the whole site looks like gravel and grass. So we are very clear in the conditions that anywhere you intend on storing a vehicle, you will need to pave, assuming that's definitely gonna be over 2,500 square feet. So it will require, this site will require site plan review, which means paving, landscaping, or and also stormwater. We have let the applicant know that that would be a condition. Our, that she will indicate that it is a temporary root use, and she doesn't want to do that because it's only a temporary use. We have also put a condition in the staff report that should you all approve or recommend approval of this item, that the conditional use would only be good for two years because she is indicating that it's only temporary.
By temporary, she has meant two years herself? Is that what she's talking about?
There's never been discussion on what temporary means. And, you know, when people say temporary to us, there's a lot in downtown.